Good evening, everyone, and welcome. It is Wednesday, April 6, 2022. We are going to call to order our open public budget hearing meeting. This meeting is required under the law. And it is required that we have a quorum of school committee members present for our open budget hearing. So I'm going to just ask for a roll call vote to put onto the record that we have a quorum. So Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
Dr. Craighead?
Yes.
Member Rose Naren?
Yes.
Member Abahart, yes, and Dr. Carol has not yet joined us, but I'm sure she'll be joining us shortly. All right, so welcome, everyone. This will be an opportunity for the public to ask questions or make comments or wonderings about the budget. I know that Assistant Superintendent Dexter has a budget presentation ready to share. And I'm not really sure, members of the committee and Assistant Superintendent Dexter, if we should, and Superintendent Jet, should we just open it up to start with questions and then show the budget as we go along? Or do you want to go through some of the slides first to give people a quick update? Tell me your thoughts. Yes, Superintendent Dexter.
So I think it would be helpful if I just briefly showed what the ask was or what the request was, what the current recommendation by the Select Board, School Committee, Warrant Committee joint consensus is.
Okay.
And then we could open it up to questions without going into a lot of detail unless you want to go through the positions.
No. I don't. No, I think it's important to have enough time or as much time as necessary to ask people to ask questions since this is a hearing. But I do think some preliminary pre, you know, presentation probably helpful for the public.
Okay. James, are you okay with me just sharing the screen and going right into it, or do you want?
Absolutely. Absolutely. You want to maximize the time.
So I'm going to share my screen.
Great, thank you.
Let me know if.
We can see it.
Okay. So I might be looking like I'm looking to my left because I have dual screens. My camera's on this one, my presentation's on the other one, so just wanted to clarify that so it doesn't seem like I'm being rude. Okay, so. First off, just quickly, the Milton Public School Department requested a total of sixty million, five hundred and two thousand, seven hundred and forty-six. That's a needs-based budget. What that consists of is the FY22 budget plus contractual wage adjustments and obligations, combined with needs-based asks, like additional funding for new positions or initiatives. The, what we refer to as a rollover budget, which is just the FY22 budget with the contractual wage adjustments, is fifty-eight million, fifty-four, one-one-five. An important thing I want to point out is approximately eighty-two percent of the budget is salary and wages. The rest are non-salary. Also, within the needs-based budget is a request for one-time monies for social studies curriculum and math curriculum. So this is the slide that I think is important. I know it's kind of busy. There's a lot of numbers, but basically, this does two things. It rolls forward the budget from what the school department has for fiscal twenty-two to what our ask for the rollover ask is, and then forward to what's the needs-based ask. And then the second important piece of this is I broke it down between what the current recommendation of the Select Board and the Warrant Committee looks like it will be. It was voted on Monday by Warrant Committee Select Board a week or two ago. So basically, of the sixty million, five oh two, seven forty-six ask, the recommendation is a total of fifty-nine million, three sixty-three, one oh nine, leaving a million one of the needs-based asks unfunded. But the funding sources for the recommendation is approximately fifty-seven point eight from the operations of the town, the revenues of town, like the real estate taxes and local receipts. The current recommendation is to fund the full ask for the new curriculum and social studies and math for a total of approximately five hundred and ninety thousand. That recommendation is to use free cash, which is a one-time source of funds in order to purchase and implement that curriculum. So the total recommendation that will be seen in the town meeting warrant will be fifty-eight million, three sixty-five, four hundred and twenty-three. But there's also an additional avenue that we're going to for funding, and that's the American Rescue Plan Act funds through the Treasury and through the county. And there are approximately nine hundred and ninety-eight thousand that are going, they're going to submit to ARPA. ARPA is one-time funding. We do predict that these positions will be needed more than one year, so we predict we'll be asking for them for FY24 and beyond. But in order to balance the budget and get the school department's needs funded, that's an avenue that there was a consensus to go down that route to seek funding that way. Just want to point out of that, two hundred and seventy-eight thousand, five hundred is being funded by ARPA, but it was part of our rollover request. So those are mainly special education positions that are legally mandated, but can be tied to the pandemic, because the ARPA money is things that were unforeseen or a product of the effects of the pandemic. So most of those positions are special education, teachers and aides due to the increased number in kids requiring service related to the unfinished learning. And the rest is just detail of what the positions that are being funded with ARPA are, and then a list of ones that are being unfunded. So we can show that, or we can open it up to questions, and then we can refer to that if you prefer.
Thank you, Assistant Superintendent Dexter. That was very helpful, and I think it summarized it very concisely with a nice visual for that support. So I think that we can open it up to questions from the community about the budget. I'm not sure Superintendent Jet or Milton Access TV, who's gonna, I can tell the community members to raise their hand, and they can be raised to the panelists and then to state their name and address for the record. But I'm not sure who will be doing that. That's a really good question.
I would take care of that if anyone wants to raise their hand.
Can I ask a question? Do you want me to continue to share?
No, that's fine. You can stop sharing, and I guess if the need becomes to look at that again, because it's sort of nice to be able to see people, I mean, to each other. Oh, welcome, Dr. Carol. We're gonna add Dr. Carol to the attendance list. There we go.
If anyone has any questions, you can raise your hand, identify yourself. I will promote you to speak. At the moment, I do not see any hands raised, Chair Abahart. But I do.
So I would like to just remind everyone that we, I see that people sometimes use the chat. To use the chat is a violation of the open meeting law, because not everyone can see it, and it can raise questions that would not be accessible to everyone. So if you have something, would you just please raise your hand and state it out loud so that we can all hear that at the same time? I'm sorry that I didn't ask for the chat to be shut down. That's something important to keep in mind whenever we're having a Zoom-type meeting.
So the first person raising their hands I see is Jill Clark. And if. If Milton Access is there, I don't know why I'm not getting the elevation to panelists.
There she is. Oh, we see her now.
Okay.
And Superintendent Dexter, you can share the screen again. That's fine. Someone asked for that. It's fine. Someone asked.
Thank you. Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great. Jill Clark, 26 Harold Street. Are there any major changes in staffing proposed compared to last year in FY23?
I guess the question, if I heard you correctly, of the staffing proposals, we did ask for additional staffing. I believe that was up on the screen, a math interventionist, reading specialist, and support. I'm not sure if you're meaning switching or. Jill Clark, are you there?
Yes.
So here's the list of the staffing that are being asked for. Some of these staff, if you see at the top, I think Assistant Superintendent Dexter mentioned it. Some of them are contractual services. You'll see sped, top-two sped teachers, then followed by special education aides. Those are contractual services. Then if you look at the next tier, where it says priorities one through ten, you'll see the math interventionist, reading specialist, Pierce Middle School Guidance Counselor slash Coordinator. And then you'll see two-point-four K aides. Those technically are not new positions. Those are just elevating people who are part-time, which is a point eight, elevated to a one-point-oh. And then you see two adjustment counselors that are on that list. And then if you go down to the next tier, excuse me, the math high school teacher. And then if you go down to the next tier, early childhood education coordinator. For those who've been paying attention to some of the meetings that we've had, our pre-K program is growing significantly. Jonathan Redden is doing a dual role in some cases, supporting the pre-K program along with being the principal of the Cunningham School. And then we talked about the part-time nurses. I think we elevated that conversation over the course of the last two years with the challenges that we had in terms of the student-to-nurse ratio at each of the buildings. So those are the new proposals right there, and everything else was pretty much a rollover in terms of positions.
Thank you. That's really helpful. And are all the staff changes being proposed increases, or are there any staff positions that will be eliminated?
Staff positions being eliminated? I wouldn't necessarily say eliminated. I'll give you an example. We're currently, and you hear this at the school committee meeting, we had to backfill two positions, Assistant Superintendent and a DEI Coordinator, or Director, I should say. And then depending on the movements in terms of people retiring or possibly moving on and taking leaves, it's not really a change or elimination. It is potentially just backfilling.
Thank you.
Can I just add something? I can't raise my hands when I'm sharing my screen. So to Superintendent Jet's point, the rollover, the rollover budget, there are no cuts being made. Everything that we ask for in the rollover budget, all the positions are being funded. There were these top five in the list that, some of those are currently on staff now that because they're legal mandates, that will roll into FY23. And then the other ones are all new positions. They are things that we ask for. The funds aren't available in the operating budget to fund those for FY23, so we're seeking the ARPA. We do have a list of ones, items that are unfunded, and that's this list here. So there are some teachers on there. There's some general expenses on here as well. And some, like, support staff positions.
Next question is from Colleen McCaffey, I believe. I hope it just takes a little bit of time for them to be elevated.
So James, I did the last one. I clicked on allowed to talk, but I can't see that now that I'm sharing my screen.
Yeah. If you could stop sharing your screen. I thought it was Ida did it in the chat. I don't have that key. I don't know why. It just says chat, and I press it, so.
Okay, so.
Colleen McCaffey.
Hi. Hi, everyone. Thanks for, thanks for having me. Just a quick question, and I'm certainly not a math expert, but would you mind showing the screen again, whoever has? I guess two questions. The eligible rollover, the bottom line item in red. Can you clarify what that means, the ARPA? And I can't see the screen right now. I might, I'm sorry.
Sorry, hold on. Let me try again.
Why she's doing that, Colleen, ARPA, OPERA is the American Rescue Plan Act?
Right.
Okay, okay.
Is this the slide, or did you mean?
The other, the other one.
This one?
Yes. Eligible needs above rollover. So is that the bottom, the seven nineteen? Is that budget that we have? Or is that, so can you explain that a little bit?
Yeah, so what we consider to be the rollover budget is if we took every staff person and every initiative that we have in place today funded in the FY22 budget, and we just rolled it forward, adding no new positions, just adding contractual obligations and like steps and wage increases that are also contractual in the collective bargaining agreements. That's what would be considered the rollover, and the only caveat to that is if there's any legally mandated positions in the special education area, we would also consider that being a rollover, meaning it's not discretionary. It's something we have to do because we're contractually or legally obligated to do it. The other needs above rollover are the things that the school committee, the administration, and the leadership team has identified as we really need these things, but they're not currently in place. So they're considered needs-based or above the rollover. I'm not sure if that makes sense.
No, that's actually, that's very helpful. And then if I may have one more question. So, you know, I think, given that we're coming out of, you know, a two-year, you know, really two-and-a-half-year learning loss. And, you know, I think, I know personally, I speak for myself, you know, I have two children of my three that are in special education and on an IEP. How was it identified that one interventionist, because I think we have zero right now, right, in the district, and one reading specialist? So how did we come up with that number for the district?
So can I show another slide, Superintendent Jet? So we have some other sources of funding that are, have already been approved by the Select Board. The Select Board is the body that recommends the funding through the ARPA funds. We also have something called ESAR funds, and those are other federal grants. Both of these programs relate to the pandemic and needs of the district, or the town for that matter, that are related to the effects of the pandemic. So anytime we say it's ARPA-eligible, it's positions that we believe are eligible because, positions or items that are eligible because the need is there because of the effects of the pandemic. So the big piece of that is the unfinished learning, the social-emotional aspect of the effects of the pandemic on the students or the unfinished learning on the students. I did have a slide in my other presentation that it looks like I didn't bring forward that I can pull up. I just would have to find it first, but I have it in front of me, so I can tell you. In those ARPA funds and ESAR funds, there are some interventionists in there. So for example, there were three sources of ESAR funds, ESAR one, two, and three. It's just the different programs that came out. And then the ESAR three grant program, which is the most recent one, and that needs to be spent by September 30th of '24. We have an elementary math interventionist and an elementary reading specialist that are being funded through that grant for FY23 and FY24. That's already been approved. And if they are not on staff yet, we are still in the process of trying to fill those positions. There's also a high school special education teacher in that grant, and a pre-K through twelve behavioral health specialist to address the social-emotional learning aspects. And then in ARPA Project One, which has already been approved by the Select Board and is currently with Norfolk County for consideration and approval, there's an additional pre-K through twelve behavioral health specialist as well as a guidance adjustment counselor for the middle school and another school nurse. And that's all so far that has actually gone through the process.
Okay, and no, I appreciate that. And just one more point, because I was, I do try and do some self-research. When I clicked on this link earlier online, just an FYI, these links do not work. Or at least they didn't work for me, and I'm not sure if they work for anyone else. Just wanted to call that out.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I think it might be, I might have lost the link when I converted to PDF, so I apologize for that. I can look into that tomorrow.
Nope, totally understood. Thank you for the explanation.
And I think Superintendent Jet, if I might for a minute, the questions that Ms. McCarthy just asked are so important because the budget, the budget that we're talking about tonight is the one that will be voted on by a town meeting in May. But the positions that are, that are part of, have been approved of and are not part of that, this budget, are not here, obviously. So I think that there are additional positions that were funded through ESAR that are not reflected here, that will need to be discussed by future school committees and next, in a year or two, about what that funding looks like and what positions will remain and what positions might not be. So those are really excellent questions and important to keep in mind for the community as well.
At this point in time, Chair Abahart, I do not see any additional hands. Folks, if you have a question, we still have a few minutes left. Please raise your hand, and Assistant Superintendent Dexter will elevate you. I do not see any hands at this point in time. I do see Colleen McCaffey's hand back up. I'm not sure if she just didn't put it down. Oh, there you go.
I do. Sorry, I do have a follow-up question, and I apologize. It's a conversation here with me here. So just to follow up and share, thank you for clarifying, you know, those other positions. So I just want to make sure that I understand appropriately. So what we're saying is that this grant money, we are using to fund one math interventionist and then one additional reading specialist for the district. And forgive me for, but does the other, the remaining budget that we voted on, does that include additional positions in those areas? And if so, how many? Sorry, thank you.
Yes, I think in the budget that we presented was one math interventionist and one reading specialist that complement that. And I, and I think to go to Chair Abahart's statement, and I would extend it a little further, when she talked about future school committees have to talk about this. These are positions that we desperately need, that we utilize in funding from additional grant funding, but they're also needed without the grant. And I think I need to elevate that. These are positions that we need. Our enrollment's growing. We have certain academic goals that we're going to be working, we're working on. We need the adequate staff and to support the students to achieve those goals, those achievement outcomes, student outcomes. So yes, there's one.
Superintendent Jet and Assistant Superintendent Dexter, I think that I had emailed Superintendent Dexter a question myself the other day. So I think the clarifying question here is how many positions? So there's a math and a reading specialist in the budget that we will vote at town meeting. But from the other money, the ESAR money, there are people working in those positions or soon to be working in those positions. So what is that total number that will be available to students, Dr. Carol or Assistant Superintendent Sheen? So that's more clear for people. That would be, I think, what we're trying to get out here in this, in this moment.
Maybe just to add on to that for the clarification, those positions, those additional beyond the one math, one reading, would be currently reflected in our rollover budget.
Okay.
Right? Because these are people, I think, but that's what I would, yeah.
I think that what people are trying to understand is the number of people working in those positions. So next year, when you come back to school in September of 2022, how many math interventionists, reading specialists, will there be working in the district to support students? That's the question that people, if I'm understanding Ms. McCarthy's question, I think that's what.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, so.
So it sounds like it's not, it's not an either-or scenario, right? So if we don't hire with this grant money, it doesn't mean that we're not going to hire with the budget, correct? So if we don't allocate, if we don't allocate the grant money, ARPA, maybe I'm not understanding it appropriately. Does it mean that we're not using the remaining budget or the vote, vote voted upon budget to hire those positions? Like, it's not an either or scenario is what I'm asking. So there's potential for us to have two math interventionists and two reading specialists. Okay, took me a while to get there.
Me too.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Assistant Superintendent Sheen, Dexter, and then Ross Denny. Go ahead, the three of you can sort of wrangle that out for me. Jan, you have to unmute.
So under our ESER funds, we have already hired, we've already hired a literacy specialist who's working in the primary grade, supporting students. And so that, that position has been in place. We have hired an adjustment counselor. And we have actually hired, we, we have a couple of other positions that are funded through other grants. So we have another adjustment counselor who's being funded by a social emotional learning grant. So that's what, that's what I'm recalling right now. But certainly, we could put together a list of positions that have been filled under grant money and the difference between those positions and the additional positions going forward.
Yeah, and if I could, thank you, I appreciate it. And if I guess, just add some color, I think, you know, I think, I certainly can't speak for the community, but I have a lot of friends that are concerned about learning loss, especially as we come out of the pandemic. And I think, you know, those of us that are parents all have that concern in getting our kids caught up. And as we look to the future and preparing budget for special education, the more work we do now to support our students, the better off we'll be. So I appreciate your, your time spent in that area. Thank you.
Member Ross Denny and Assistant Superintendent Dexter, anything you can add to, for those two conversations would be great.
Yeah, so I want to reassure Ms. McCarthy that when the school district or the data department presented the MCAS data from the spring of two thousand twenty-one, one of the only groups to consistently show gains was in special education. So the magnitude of the learning loss was least impacted by that population. But with that said, the important point was something that Chair Abahat said about the budget. Town meeting has to approve what you just saw. And one of the challenges we had last year, within, under the anticipation of learning loss, was a budget that included such specialists, and it wasn't approved. So if you want these resources secured for your child and the other children in the Milton public schools, we need your support to make sure that we get the funding we need to do the work well. Otherwise, it's really difficult to have conversations about accountability or, you know, how do we do things different or better, whatever it is. If you don't have the resources to do the work, then it's much harder to have that conversation. But I do think that, given your interest and the quality of your questions, I hope that you'd be an advocate out in the community to support the schools and the budget that we're proposing for next school year.
Assistant Superintendent Dexter, sorry.
So yeah, so I just wanted to add two more points. I'm going through my budget book quickly, but just quick look, I do see there isn't reading interventionist already in addition to the, the two, the one in the operating requests, the one in the ESER funds, there's a third one that's in the rollover budget. And then, what was my second point? Oh, I also want to point out that within some of the ARPA positions is a program that we're referring to Beyond the Bell. And that's additional support for students after school or during school vacation summer to assist identif- some students that need some additional help. I don't know if Superintendent Jet wanted to elaborate on that or if I explained that okay?
You explained it very well, but to just close it out, faculty and staff have been meeting, curriculum coordinator has been meeting, identifying students who may need additional support based on assessment data that's been happening during this academic year. And so we're going to have targeted support, focused support for those students throughout the summer months. They happened during February vacation. We have another camp coming up April, and then we have a program during the summer months as well.
Well, I want to thank everyone.
I think it has a question.
Head Superintendent, what were you going to say?
Dr. Craig Head has her.
Oh, Dr. Craig Head, I'm so sorry. I didn't see, see your hand raised. Go ahead.
It's fine, it's fine. I just want to follow up a little bit on what Member Ross Denny said, and that is to say that though this budget that we presented to you tonight has been backed, supported by the select board, the vote that was taken on Monday night with the Warren Committee was in favor of it, but the vote was not unanimous. And the three people who voted against it are actually the three people who were assigned as the school committee, subcommittee of the Warren Committee. And there is some discussion, perhaps, of them revisiting that. So I would urge all of you who support this budget, which is a good one for Milton Public Schools, to reach out to your town meeting members and to tell them how important it is that they support this budget for Milton Public Schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Craig Head. And thank you, Assistant Superintendents Sheen and Dexter and Superintendent Jet for helping us with this open budget hearing tonight. We're going to call adjourn, we're going to adjourn to our regular school committees. So I'm going to call the open public budget hearing to a close. I want to thank the committee, the town, town members who came to speak this evening. And I'm going to welcome everyone to the April sixth, two thousand twenty-two Milton School Committee meeting. Our first order of business is to review the agenda and to make any changes, additions, or subtractions. Yes, Dr. Carol.
Sorry, I'm on my husband's PC and I don't know how to work it. I, can you please elevate Cora Redman to a panelist? Somebody?
Thank you.
Representative?
Thank you.
All right, so, welcome, everyone, welcome. We have a busy agenda this evening, shocking, I know. Been the order of business for these last couple of meetings. But is there any changes, additions, subtractions, et cetera, to the agenda this evening? Yes, Dr. Carol.
Sorry. Yes, I'd like to postpone the policy report. We are still waiting for feedback from our legal counsel who needs to weigh in and provide some perspective on those policies that are going to be coming forward for first readings at a later date. So that can at least shorten our meeting a little bit.
Great, thank you so much. Anyone else? All right, can I have a second to approve the agenda with the removal of our policy subcommittee report?
Second.
Second.
We'll take a roll call vote for our purpose of attendance as well. Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Dr. Craig Head?
Yes.
Member Rose Maren?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
And Member, yes, okay, wonderful, all right. Superintendent Jet, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair Abahat. First up, under the superintendent's report, I'm going to call or elevate Principal Dr. Bill Fish along with his Pierce Middle School Site Council, if Dr. Fish is on.
Thank you, Superintendent Jet, and good evening, everyone. Just give me a minute, I'll share my screens, we can get our presentation shared with you. Can you see that? Good, all right. Thank you all, I appreciate the opportunity to present tonight along with our Site Council. We have been really fortunate to have such a committed and driven council. We have, I've enjoyed, we've enjoyed a lot of consistency in our membership over the course of the past couple of years. We have seen a number of members stay with our Site Council over the course of the past two and three years. We've also been able to welcome several members each of the past few years. And I just want to compliment, thank the Site Council for their time, for faithfully attending our meetings, for volunteering for subcommittees in my eleven or so years as a principal. I've never seen such an active and engaged council. We are, wanted to share some follows with you tonight to give you a glimpse into student life here at Pierce. We are at Pierce nearly one thousand fun, enthusiastic, unique students who are amid an exciting and ever-changing time in our development. And as a school community, we recognize and celebrate this time of booming physical, cognitive, and social emotional growth and development. And we know that physically, it's interesting and sometimes tricky times about mentally for our students. But as a school community, we're committed to fostering an environment that understands, values, and empathizes with the many changes that our students are experiencing. Cognitively, as students grow and age and mature through the early teen years, their reasoning and critical thinking capacities continue to develop. And middle school is really a unique opportunity to develop students' confidence, both as, in their identities, both as learners and as thinkers. And then socially and emotionally. This is a time of developing self-awareness and awareness of others and learning to navigate social interpersonal dynamics, learn to build and sustain relationships and to develop emotional resilience. And I'm really proud of our whole school community, from our students and educators and families that we've just, they've done a phenomenal job over the course of the past couple of years. There've been many challenges that we've all encountered. And I'd like to off, especially offer a note of acknowledgement to our faculty and staff, who've been amazing. We've been through a lot in the past couple of years, but I'm proud of how our faculty has responded. You know, always with our students' development, learning, and well-being at the center of their work. Next, we'll, we'll zoom out and take a quick look at our school profile. When you, when you do this, you see, take a holistic look, you see a story of enrollment growth. We are currently at just under nine hundred thirty students at Pierce. Sixth and seventh grade are three hundred twenty-one students each, and grade eight is at two eighty-six. When we look ahead, though, at the next couple of years, we start to see significant growth, you know, based on those straight line projections of enrollment, looking at our current fifth grade, which will be next year's sixth grade, we're looking at over a hundred student enrollment growth from this year to next year. And the same holds true for, for the following year, for twenty-three, twenty-four. So these conversations about not just enrollment, but its space, which we've been actively engaged in over the course of the past few months, even years, with the School Building Committee, but also, when we think, think about the budget that was recently presented, these are things that we're going to need to be really thoughtful about in order to continue to deliver the high-quality learning experiences that our students have enjoyed historically. We will now shift our focus to bring the committee up to speed on some of the school improvement efforts and initiatives that we've been engaged in throughout the two thousand twenty-one, two thousand twenty-two school year. Our school improvement efforts have been grounded in three tenets or underpinnings. And those are academic achievement, social emotional learning and behavioral health, and diversity, equity, inclusion. And we see these three tenets really working together to drive focus on students and their development as learners, as well as people. And we really need to look at these tenets as being interdependent. We have to view social emotional learning, behavioral health, and diversity, equity, inclusion as the foundations of our values and ultimately the foundation of students' academic achievement. It's important to note that these underpinnings are aligned with the vision of excellence and equity that our district has constructed, which is reflected in the strategic plan that we've recently been engaged in refining. So our Site Council, this year, authored a new school improvement plan that will guide our priorities over the course of the next few years. Each of these priority areas is aligned with the three underpinnings of academic achievement, social emotional learning and behavioral health, and diversity, equity, inclusion. And the school improvement plan has four priority areas. The first is school culture, student support engagement. The second is teaching and learning. The third is data, creating a data culture and sustaining a data culture. And the fourth is facilities, staffing, and enrollment. Though in the school improvement plan's priority of teaching and learning, we have a goal to consistently facilitate rigorous, research-based, and culturally responsive curricula with exemplary instruction to meet the needs of every learner while promoting excellence and preparing students for success. In relation to this goal, in relation to each of their goals, we have a theory of action. And the theory of action around this priority area is that if we engage students in rigorous, standards-based curricula and invest in the professional learning of our educators, then we'll support the learning and development of all students. Now, at this time, I'm going to introduce proudly Kat Taroche, our K to eight literacy director, as well as Brian Seelig, our K to eight math director, to take you into a glimpse of the curriculum, both in ELA and math, and to talk a little bit about some of the curricular changes that have taken place over the past few years, as well as student achievement by way of MCAS, and also the diagnostics that we've implemented through both Lexia and I Ready.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Fish. Hello, everyone, it's good to see you again. You will hear some repeated information from the last couple of years, in particular, with regards to the changes in curriculum, because it is sort of a new shift. So some of this will be review. But Brian and I are going to kind of toggle back and forth as we went into this process, really trying to find the best and most efficient way to present it to you. We found there were many parallels to what we both wanted to share. So we hopefully won't stumble over one another too, too much. But Brian, I'll let you introduce yourself.
Thanks, Kat. Brian Seelig, math director for the district, great to be here, thank you. And as Kat said, our goal over the next few slides here is to kind of bounce back and forth between the two of us talking about curriculum and data at Pierce. Since someone, to avoid stumbling over each other, I'll go ahead and jump into a refresher about our math curriculum at Pierce. You may recall last year that we were piloting the Desmos curriculum in grade seven and eight because it wasn't yet available in grade six at that time. Since then, starting in this past fall of two thousand twenty-one, we now have a consistent use of the Desmos curriculum across all three grade levels at Pierce. I've included some links in here. I encourage you to peruse with some information about the Desmos curriculum. It is a digitally enhanced version of the Illustrated of Mathematics curriculum, which is generally considered to be the highest rated, best-aligned, most rigorous math curriculum available at the secondary level in particular. What makes Desmos, I think, even better than Illustrated Mathematics is that it offers unique experiences for students through the technology enhancements. So while the Illustrated Math curriculum is paper-based and doesn't allow for the immediate feedback or the depth of discovery, thanks to the technology embedded in Desmos, it's possible through the course of activities and lessons for students to really explore and get immediate feedback that informs their understanding of the concept. So with that, let me pause and allow Kat to speak about the ELA Amplify curriculum.
Sure, so, as should sound familiar, we are in our second year of implementation in grades six, seven, and eight with the Amplify Curricular Resource with our students and staff. And we'll go into a little bit more of the conditions of what the last year and a half has presented to us in the world of education. But in general, we are finding this year to be a more, more true reflection of what pacing and content is looking like in the classrooms and the ability to utilize both the online digital platform, as well as the analog resources within the curriculum. And so to And so to recap the process, really, the shift towards a thematically-based curriculum is what the research and evidence tells us is best for students. And that is what Amplify is able to provide. We, we meet as departments every seven days, more or less, to go over the opportunities and challenges that are presenting themselves. And that's an ongoing reflective process. And so we have found that the high ceilings and low entry points for students does give them the ability to access a range of the adaptive features of the curriculum, though we recognize nothing is perfect. So we are working through what specific needs students in Milton have or opportunities that that might be required to provide for them. So as we do with any curriculum, we are meeting regularly to talk through those. Again, similar to what Brian had said about Desmos, providing high-quality, evidence-based, and standards-based curriculum is, is truly the definition of, of an equitable educational experience. And that is, is what we are, what we seek to provide and what we're finding is true of this as well. And so there are links here. The first link will go over the Curriculum Program Guide that will, will give anyone who is interested the overview and pedagogy and the thought process behind the development of the curriculum. There is a caretaker and family site that Amplify provides. And then the third link will bring you to the Pierce Middle School ELA curriculum site, where grade-level scope and sequences specific.
Not as well, Kat. Oh, I think you're better now.
Yeah, can you hear me now?
Perfect.
Okay. I got a little alert. So I think with that, we can now move on to, to talk through, you know, thinking about which data to present. We decided and landed on, you know, the 2021 MCAS data, as well as the internal consistent iReady diagnostic, as well as the Lexia Rapid screener, to be able to talk through some of, you know, what we've noticed and how we're seeing students present at this point. So first up in this slide, you'll see, and this slide may look familiar, the wonderful VIVU is, is the data extraordinaire provided us with this information. The first section does go over the ELA MCAS from 2021. Again, this is the same data. This is not new. And you'll see that while in ELA in particular, there was a dip, we, we, we sort of mostly went back to our 2018 achievement performance levels. Brian, I don't know if you want to go through math and then we can sort of talk about the context as a whole, because that makes.
I'll do a little bit of both. Yeah, so the, the sort of historical trend in the math MCAS data from 2017 through 2021, excluding obviously 2020, when the MCAS was not given, is in the middle of your screen. And as a no has been discussed already by the committee prior to today, we saw a significant dip in student performance as measured by MCAS last spring. We are very optimistic about seeing a rebound from that this year. I think it's really important when we're talking about any of the subject areas to keep in mind that last year was extremely disruptive to instruction. We had a hybrid model or remote model in place all the way up through just about this time last year, where students were essentially having less than half of the amount of face-to-face instructional time with their teachers as they were used to. And not really a very obvious way to overcome that, that shortfall. The MCAS itself was administered in a different fashion than we're used to. There was one session instead of two. And given that we were finally just back to school, not that, and I want to acknowledge that there were still students who were fully remote at this time, but that we had not returned to in-person more than four to six weeks prior. There was a concerted and intentional effort on the part of certainly our math department to try to capitalize on every moment of instruction that we could get. And because of that did not set aside what we normally would, which is sort of some intentional preparation and review for students leading into the MCAS. And so this slide just is meant to kind of remind us of this circumstances in which our students took MCAS last year. You know, I think that at this point, it feels like a long time ago. And in some ways it was, and in some ways, I guess it's reasonable to include it in our presentation, certainly for you. But as far as I'm concerned, I think that last slide shows what is at this point now, fair to say, is outdated data.
Right. I would only, you know, add that while it's important to still collect data in, in the way that I'm picturing in the next few years, we'll be able to see that trend analysis. That will be, that will be interesting, but for the reasons that Brian mentioned, it's a hard data point to hang a lot of stock or to put a lot of stock into due to this idea of the truncated curriculum pacing. Similarly, for ELA, we, you know, most recently in our department meetings have been talking about how much further along we are in reflecting on what it was like returning to sort of that full-day model in April of last year and how much more content curriculum and just in general, like, learning is happening this year. And so I think that, that warrants mentioning as we discuss this. So more sort of moving away from that performance-based task of, of MCAS and looking in particular at this screener. And again, this idea of reflecting and digging into data, not only as it relates to student growth and achievement, but also examining, defining, and, and triangulating data for different purposes. So in other words, this screener, we don't look at in the same way as we would in MCAS. Both are very important, but they do very different things. And so this screener, and I know a lot of the people on the screener in education, but this screener really gives us an idea of where students are in a moment in time. And so again, similar to MCAS, we do not put all of our stock into this assessment, though we do use it to pay attention to the trends we're seeing among students. So we ask ourselves, we are students in this moment, are there students who are not sort of on our proverbial radar that, that need to be? And are there things we need to address in a tier-one fashion that, that may, may come as a trend and pattern? So as you see, we are, we are looking right here at the fall and winter. Spring, of course, has not been administered. Blue representing above grade level, green on grade level, and gray below grade level. So there, there's, you know, there's some growth there. Again, we're not seeing staggering growth, I think. And I think that also plays into this idea of the, the less than half of time in class last year. And we're going to, I'm, I'm very optimistic that we're going to see this, this move forward. This, this mirrors a national trend. And it's not something that, it's something to certainly pay attention to and really think and talk about ways that we're going to meet students where they are and move them along, though not to, to react in a way that is unreasonable.
And then on the right here, we see a similar comparison between the fall and the winter administration of the Math iReady Diagnostic, which is a holistic adaptive diagnostic assessment that questions adjusted difficulty based on student responses. And this was something that we introduced in the middle of last year in recognition that we wanted to collect some data on our students across the elementary and, and middle school level in particular to, and not sort of have to rely and wait for MCAS data to kind of see how our students were doing. And I think what we see here in this data is we see students, we see growth. We see students in each grade level. And just to, to make sure the key is clear, so, so blue, there's slightly different categories for iReady than for Lexia Rapid. But the blue is mid or on grade, mid, pardon me, mid-on or above grade level. The green, early grade level, both of those sort of combined, even in the wintertime, would be students that we would say have sort of, are ready to access on grade level content. The yellow being one grade level below in terms of overall placement. And again, the yellow at the beginning of the year is not of concern. By the time we get to winter, those students in that range come onto our radar. And then the combination of orange and red being two or more grade levels below are obviously, at least by this instrument, students that we are seriously concerned about and have strategies that we're putting in place to try to narrow and address those gaps. So we see, I think, movement in the right direction for many of our students. The, the easiest interpretation I have from this is that a good chunk of students in the green moved to the blue between fall and winter. Another good chunk from the yellow to the green from fall to winter. And so overall, an upward trend. When you dig a little bit deeper into the growth data over the course of this year, I've found that we have a large number of students that showed significant growth from fall to winter. Sort of the amount of growth that we would anticipate over the course of the entire school year, not half of it. And then another large comparable chunk of students that showed minimal to no growth. And so we're sort of perplexed a little bit by that, talking about ways to maximize the benefit and accuracy of the iReady data that we collect and looking forward to seeing what the trend shows when we administer one more time next month after MCAS and at the end of May.
Okay. So this sort of summarizes what Brian and I just articulated in that the Lexia Rapid does show somewhat of a plateau of skill demonstration, but that does remain consistent with national trends. In fact, there's been some, some grants recently through the Department of Ed that we did not qualify for due to our achievement as compared to other districts in the Commonwealth. So good news, double-edged sword, of course, but we will continue to utilize the structures and systems we have in place while also reflecting on whether those systems and structures are indeed what will make the biggest impact. So in ELA, that happens to be our reading support class that we have for students in all sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. We use Lexia Rapid data as well as MCAS data and curriculum-embedded data to ensure that we're kind of catching those students who are most in need of that support. On the other end of that spectrum, or actually, it's not on the other end of that spectrum. It's open to all students, which is a great shift. Our intensive study classes, that's an elective class, open to all students in grades seven and eight, that really has been focusing on reading, writing, and thinking. This has looked very different in each class. It's a, it's really creative. It's really innovative and responsive to student interest, where students are creating podcasts or TED Talks or writing papers or reflections and, and really digging into English language arts in a variety of ways with like-minded students in their class. So that, that is also something we're, we're, we're looking into as we move into a new school year.
And if I may just elevate a couple of thoughts as far as how this pertains to math. You know, one thing that I want to make the committee and the community aware of is that thanks to some support from Dr. Fish and the other building administrators, we've been able to meet as grade-level curriculum teams every cycle, which has really bolstered the implementation of the curriculum this year. It's allowed us to ensure that we have consistent, common curriculum-embedded assessments in place that were following the same pacing guide, but also making the best instructional decisions for student learning. And I credit the teachers who I work with at Pierce and the math department for their commitment in those areas and the, and the time and effort that they invest in that work with me. We're also continuing to evaluate supplemental resources to address those gaps in skills and knowledge from prior grade levels that we recognize to be particularly critical to address in math, so that the on-grade level content can be accessed successfully. And we've utilized a, a new model of our math investigations classes across all three grades this year with that exact purpose in mind. So every math teacher at Pierce has their standard for math classes and then one section of math investigations for students who have been identified or recommended as needing a second dose or additional support that those teachers have. And it's just a subset of their own students from the other four math classes that they teach. So they have the, the familiarity with the student, the student has the familiarity with them. And we're continuing, as we look ahead to next year, to decide how best to support the supplemental instruction in that class. And then as far as the intensive study electives for math goes, very similar to Kat in that it's an opportunity for students to explore mathematical concepts in greater depth, to engage in low-floor and high-ceiling tasks, collaborate with each other. And I give Mr. Moonen in seventh grade and Ms. Shapiro in eighth grade a lot of credit for getting that off the ground and running this year. Even though we've sort of had the classes in the past, they've been completely revamped, credit to them for that.
And I would be remiss if I didn't mention Erin Power, who has taken the intensive study, sort of reimagining very personally and very creatively and has made it a class that many students just rave about. So thanks to her.
And Kat, thank you for sharing those insights. I just, I want to acknowledge for, for, for everyone who's on, especially the committee, just how much gratitude and appreciation I have for both Kat and Brian for their work, for their relentless commitment to, to students and their learning and their growth and their unwavering support and commitment to the teachers with whom they, they work closely with and continue to push to do as best they can by our students and to develop their own, their own craft as educators. So Brian and Kat, thank you for, for being here on, on all of our behalf. What I'd like to do now is shift, let me talk about those three underpinnings of school improvement. And I like, I like to shift our focus now to social-emotional learning and behavioral health. So we hearken back to our school improvement plan. That the school improvement plan has a priority area of school culture, student support, and engagement. And within that goal, we have a goal rather to explicitly develop a strong school culture that is anchored in the core values, safety, responsibility, respect, and kindness in a school culture that's characterized by strong relationships, sense of community, student wellness, and student-centered belongings. And within that goal, we have a theory of action that says that if our school's culture promotes inclusivity, respect, and achievement, then students and educators will be able to excel and to thrive. So there are several aspects of this priority that we'd like to share with you tonight. And the first is the work of our Culture and Behavior Committee. So Pierce's Culture and Behavior Committee is a group of educators focused on creating a school-wide system with common expectations that help to continue to build a positive school culture and support student social-emotional learning and behavioral health in safe and supportive school environments. So we view the safest supportive school environments as being guided by those four values, safety, responsibility, respect, and kindness. And we bring this work to life through some ongoing initiatives, as well as some opportunities for student recognition. This, the work of this group has evolved over time and up, and began with developing these school-wide values and expectations. It turned into developing and planning for lessons. Began with developing these schoolwide values and expectations. It turned into developing and planning for lessons for students and staff, which we'll talk about a little bit shortly. But one of the one of my favorite aspects of this work has this become embedded in our school culture is our monthly recognition of students who exemplify those four values. So through this initiative, each grade, students in each grade rather are recognized monthly for demonstrating one if or more of these values. You'll see here that that poster, the Pierce Middle School Positive Community Member poster is is. Throughout our building, reminding our students and staff of our our core values. And with that, you'll see students, I believe those from the month of February, students who are recognized. By their teachers and by our our CBC for being models of embodying those values. I also. I would be remiss to talk about the Culture Behavior Committee without. Specifically naming two of our incredible educators, Michaela Dixon and Melissa Augustin. Who have been really teacher leaders in this process and bringing this group's vision to reality. The Student Life Culture Club is was really born out of the work of the Faculty Culture Behavior Committee. And for the past two years, our Student Life Culture Club has developed and implemented a variety of schoolwide activities and events. That have contributed to a fun and positive school culture. So. Examples of these events and activities have included things like themed spirit weeks and spirit days, color wars where each of the grades dressed in a certain color to compete against each other. And really develops a lot of class spirit, school spirit. And our culture, student culture club. Has also contributed to some of our connection time lessons and activities. And we'll touch on some of those in a moment. The evolution of the culture club has given students some leadership opportunities that have provided them with more ways to have ownership. For building a strong sense of community and culture and connection in their school. Another structure that we've highlighted as a strategy to continue to grow school culture, student support engagement is what we call connection time. And the purpose of connection time is to provide students with regular opportunities to engage with a small group of students and a staff member. To develop their sense of connection with one another, to their teacher, to their school. And the idea is that through these small connection time communities, students will feel safe and connected to a group of peers. Have a connection with their teacher and feel safe and comfortable with this built in the building. Connection time takes place once every seven days in our cycle for for twenty nine minutes. And on that 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 seventh day in the cycle, connection time replaces that structure that we call flex time. That students have the other six days in the cycle. And during connection time, educators who are leading their small groups have a variety of options for engaging with their with their group. Sometimes they're themed activities and lessons that are developed either by our CBC or our our Culture Club. Sometimes they are just community building and get to know you activities. They can be group discussions, student check ins. Some teachers like to play games and students. Many will use mindfulness activities. In some cases, they just use this flex time and give some some time to on their own. Some of the examples of of lessons and activities that take place during connection time. Are those community building and getting to know you activities, goal setting activities. And most recently, during February, we had several lessons and activities that were. Celebrated Black History Month, which allows students the opportunity to do research, historical figures and to develop. Different artifacts that demonstrated their their learning and their and their growth and understanding. And most recently, in March, for Women's History Month through connection time, we did. Door decorating contests in which students in each of the connection time activities. Created decorated their their connection time doors. There's a couple of pictures there to show you. And. Again, it's a really a nice opportunity to to bring pause during the day to bring a small group of students together to to bond with each other and with their teacher. To to do it in a way that. That really livens the building up, whether it's, you know, the door decorating or some of the posters, some of the different activities to do. It really engenders a sense of. Another element of our work in SEL and Behavioral Health is our pilot of the COM Classroom Daily Mindfulness Program. Some people, some may be aware of what COM Classroom is, but if you're not, COM Classroom is a simple, sustainable mindfulness training. That relies on the belief that anyone can practice and teach mindfulness. And we know that mindfulness is widely viewed as a cornerstone of mental health and lays the foundation for the development of core. SEL conferences, such as self awareness, self management. And the the program is built on these three minute scripted breathing, stretching, focus and relaxation strategies and practices. It can be led by teachers and students and that are suitable for all learning styles and physical abilities. So we were very fortunate through a partnership with South Shore Health this year to to have a pilot group of twenty educators trained in using the mindfulness practices for their classroom. There's, you know, over the past couple of years, the research on the benefits of mindfulness in schools is. Is widely out there and that sometimes that includes things like improved SEO, social emotional resilience. Increased compassion, improved attention, improved emotional regulation and and reduce feelings of stress and anxiety. And through the Luster Institute, which is the organization that puts out COM Classroom. We were able to collect some data from the pilot of twenty teachers that have been implementing the program and it's been really favorable. Hundred percent of the teachers who responded in the in the survey rated COM Classroom's overall effectiveness as being very effective or effective. Hundred percent of teachers in the pilot who responded said that students seem calmer and more peaceful after practicing COM Classroom. Over ninety percent of teachers in the pilot who responded said that students are more ready to learn after they practice COM Classroom. Eighty three, eighty four percent of teachers in the pilot responded that students are better able to regulate their emotions since beginning of COM Classroom program. And a hundred percent of the teachers in the pilot said that students enjoy practicing COM Classroom. So. If if this was a pilot, it was limited to twenty to twenty staff who were able to be trained. And our vision really is to train the entire staff to be able to implement COM Classroom schoolwide. Another of the key actions in our school improvement plan under this priority is to disrupt trends in disproportionate discipline outcomes through the use of restorative practices. Those practices that support students and staff to learn to resolve disagreements, take ownership for their behavior and engage in acts of empathy and forgiveness. So. The onboarding of Adina Schacter, the District's Restorative Practices Coach, has been very successful in a really short period of time. Adina has quickly become a valuable resource to our administrators, to our guidance counselors, our adjustment counselors and our teachers. Ways that ways that this has come to be or come to come to fruition, really two ways. One. Through staff professional development sessions. Back in February, shortly after Adina started, she provided an intro to restorative practices to our entire faculty during one of our early release days. I believe that she has since done that for the other five schools. It was really well received by our faculty and staff. I think it helped. That helped everyone here to develop an understanding of what restorative practices are, what they're not. And it really, I think, helped to demystify some of the common misunderstandings about restorative practices. Adina is also offering a PD series and there's about fifty MPS staff who are involved. In that PD series, and I'm proud to say that about half of them are are Pierce educators. So. This shift in in thinking about and thinking about how we build community, how we respond. When harm happens through the use of restorative practices is really promising and and really exciting. And I want to acknowledge Adina, thank her for. Her leadership and her support in in bringing this to bear. Other ways that we've begun to implement some restorative practices are through the the use of circles. To we've we've begun to, we've begun rather, using two different types of circles on a really small scale. First, through the through repairing harm, you know, Adina has modeled for administrators and for counselors and for teachers. Engaging in those restorative conversations and and I would say those restorative conversations are things that have been happening in an ongoing way. All along, but there's a different focus through that restorative practices lens. So those conversations and also those conflict circles are used to repair harm that can arise between students or sometimes students and teachers. Another type of circles, that type of circle that we've begun using our community circles. So we have a a small pilot group of eighth grade students who. Were identified as being at risk for being negatively impacted by traditional disciplinary consequences. And this in this group, this community circle that Adina facilitates. It's a group of eighth graders along with two high school seniors who come down from Milton High. Once a week and they they engage in this community circle. That again is this led by this model by Adina and through her modeling and through. Her pushing into conversations that were often happening about. Community and responding to harm and you know, and thinking about discipline in the context of all this, she's really helping us to build our capacity. To to. Build a more restorative mindset. And our our third underpinning of school improvement is through diversity, equity and inclusion. And it's important here to circle back to that priority area of school culture, student support and engagement. And the goal that is to explicitly develop a strong school culture that's anchored in those core values of safety, responsibility, respect and kindness. And and as well as that that related theory of action that states that. Our schools, schools culture promotes inclusivity, respect and achievement that students and educators will be able to excel and thrive. Yeah, I think it's important here to say out loud that the the racially charged incidents from earlier in the school year. Both in our school and in community have underscored the need to guard against being reactive to situations that may arise and in favor of an approach that's more proactive and strategic. And through a partnership with our Site Council and Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee. We've we've been engaged since December in some really promising and exciting work. So following the the racially charged instance that took place back in December. Our DEI Committee met and we invited some students to attend our December meeting. And to provide them with another space to share more about their ideas and experiences. And through that, those that discourse, there were several themes that emerged that really signaled. Further opportunities to focus our work and priorities. So at this time, I'd like to introduce Stacy Solomon, who is. A faithful member of both our Site Council and Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee to talk about the partnership between our Site Council and DEI Committee.
Hi, thanks. I'm going to just apologize upfront. It's very possible my dogs might start going into a barking frenzy because. Walk in from soccer practice and that will just make them go crazy. So I'm going to apologize upfront. So yes, so as Dr. Fish said. We thought it was really important to make sure we're hearing basically the voices of all of our stakeholders. So we made sure, so we. Combined efforts between our Diversity Equity Inclusion Committee as well as our Site Council and also including. Student voices from a variety of perspectives. So it allowed us to really make sure that we had families, community members, students, staff members, administrators. As many different stakeholders and voices as part of this to help us really guide our work, which helped us create these focus areas. So. The first focus area is one that was already existing, as many of you know, in the district. Was this idea of establishing an incident reporting system. So that work sort of started as a district and now exists. So for Pierce. What's really important for for us is to really think about how do we sort of keep track of. What incidences are happening? Are there themes to those incidences? How are we responding to them? What's the timeliness of them? So sort of keeping track. So for Pierce. We want to make sure we're using the process and keeping it in a, you know, structured. Diligent way and then determining if there are themes and trends because that will really inform the work of some of our other focus areas. So for. Focus area two in connection, and this is really related. So. Dr. Fish, when he started, sort of said how these are all kind of like interrelated. It's kind of hard to talk about any of them in in isolation. So. Those restorative practices, those ideas for how to develop. A protocol for how leaders and teachers are required to respond, which is also connected to the incident reporting, right? We need the report. We need to know what's happening if if it isn't something that we've seen directly and then have a way for how to respond. And those restorative practices. Are one of the ways that. That will help us have a protocol and a process for how to do that. And there they are. So if if it's too distracting, let me know. But also what Dr. Fish said is we want to make sure we have sort of a reactive approach as well as a proactive approach. So. The reactive approach is making sure now that we have a very structured way for how to respond to these. Proactive is this idea of really figuring out ways to. Educate our staff and our families and our students on. The importance of building inclusivity and racial literacy and affirming. Each other and things like that. So we have kind of this reactive and proactive approach. Which then sort of leads into three and four. So three and four are kind of about how we make, how we support and educate and. Help our staff and four is very, you know, is also how we support our students, right? So we want to make sure that there's professional development. Ongoing and, you know, professional development. It meaning, and I know like Kat and 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 Brian talked about this, professional development, not just on race, equity and inclusion, but when we talk about. Our ELA instruction, when we talk about our mathematics instruction, when we talk about our science instruction, our social studies instruction, our art instruction, our music instruction, it should be kind of embedded within the fiber of. Of who we are and how do we really help our staff see that and do that? And trying to figure out some metrics, which has been an interesting conversation to to assess, to make sure that this is really. Becoming part of the fiber of the school. And then with that is the focus area four, which is the idea of. How do we, how do we help our students understand? What we're talking about recognizing. Bias, both implicit and explicit, how to do anti racism work. Had to be in groups and collaborate with students who are different from you. And then also looking at the curriculum and making sure that we are. We are addressing all the needs that exist based on who the population is. And so what we've done for these bottom three focus areas, areas two, three and four. With the combined efforts of our subcommittees with the Congress of our Diversity Equity Inclusion and our School Side Council, as well as the students that participated. We've created subcommittees to sort of address each one of them because it's impossible for us all to do all of it. And one of the things that I think was really fast, really amazing that was done is that for each of those subcommittees that exist. The 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 facilitators of those committees, there's co facilitating, one of whom is a staff member of. Pierce and then one of whom is a family or community member. So you really can make sure that it's a collaborative effort. I think that's pretty much the four focus areas.
Awesome. Stacy, thank you. I appreciate it. And as as we wrap up our time with the with the committee turn, this is a formal part of the presentation. It's important to highlight some of those ongoing and and continued opportunities for improvement. The school improvement plan that the our Site Council has authored. We're in year one of of a three year plan and. You know, it's comprehensive and. And it spans many domains, disciplines. But as we we think about prioritizing that work, some of the. Some of the factors that really come to the surface are are laid out here. One is the grade six transition. This is something that we've been working diligently on for the past couple of years. Tremendous amount of credit goes to our sixth grader team of teachers who have done some incredible work. Really rethinking the transition and some of this was a function of having to do to the last couple of years and the disruptions. From the school closure in twenty twenty to reopening with. Multiple models of learning to this year, thinking about the impact of all that on the the. Development of students. That's this great transition needs to remain front and center in in our ongoing strategies for improvement. Brian and Kat talked about in in great details. You know, as we build and our our data culture to. Using that data that we that we collect and talk about and and reflect on to. Really target differentiate our instruction for all students. So we can meet students where they are. In regardless of 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 grade level content area to be able to bring students along. Across the board. You know, related to the recent implementation of two curriculum in ELA and math and and more that will be coming in different content area. You know, related to the recent implementation of two curriculum and ELA math and in more that will be coming in different content areas, identifying those supplemental resources and ongoing professional learning means for educators will continue to be a priority. And then sort of going to where we we began to wrap up our presentation, continue to develop our capacity around the implementation of restored practices. And then the work that Stacy spoke to, the ongoing efforts between in the joint efforts that have been guided by our site council and the committee in those those the second, third and fourth focus areas. So again, I want to express my gratitude again to Kat and Brian and Stacy for being here tonight and presenting on behalf of of our of our school community and on behalf of our site council. And I'm to this point, we're here to answer any questions in the committee behalf of us.
Okay, member, member white, and then we go to number.
Thank you, Pierce team, for this really great presentation. So much information to digest. You know, I wanted to make two comments. One was that I'm familiar with the calm classroom. And I used it myself when I worked at the Denham Public Schools. And I think that it not only gives the students some really important tools and strategies to deal with strong emotions and regulating their emotions, but it also is very helpful for teachers to have because as you are doing it with your students, you're doing it for yourself. So it kind of refreshes teaching staff and and as well as so helpful for the students. And then the other thing I wanted to ask about was math. So when Brian and Kat were talking about the intensive study elective, I remember last year when you changed the way you decided to teach math. You know, many parents were concerned about that change and what that meant. So I'm just wondering, when you think about the fact that we have to teach all students math, whatever level of math they're on, does the intensive study elective challenge all levels? Does it challenge the kids who excel in math and really need something special or unique to continue their math skills or and does it also challenge, challenge all levels of learning? Thanks.
Thanks for the question, Member White. Yeah, I appreciate your, so I I think the way that we've intentionally designed the IS math classes this year is to, and I use a phrase earlier, low floor, high ceiling. And basically what that means is that there are multiple entry points for students to gain access and engage in the task. The commitment that we've made is to provide through the tasks that are used in the IS math classes, opportunities for students to be challenged based upon what their level of mastery and understanding of the concept is. We've tried very much to select tasks that connect to the content that they're learning in their regular math class. So it's not designed to push students into more conceptually advanced math or accelerate them into content that they wouldn't otherwise learn as a seventh or an eighth grader. But to just engage in things that we in our regular curriculum don't have space for. And it's a lot of hands on activities. It's a lot of you know, discovery based activities. And so I would, I would wrap up my response by saying that the classes intended for any student who wants to spend more time doing math and has an interest in it and is not, does not exclude a student on the basis of what their achievement or performance level in math is.
Okay, thanks.
Number Ross, did he?
So I want to thank you all for this wonderful presentation. As Bill and some of the other members of the site council can tell you, I really enjoyed my time on site council and it was really hard to leave. I had to finally kick myself off because I should have been. But I do want to acknowledge the significant difference in the conversations we're having about Pierce. And I would love to give much credit to Bill, the leadership team between the parents and the faculty and the administrators all working together, recognizing that Pierce could be more, could have a very pleasant school culture and it can be created. And it's not just a place where kids come in, learn and go home. Whether it's work, the academic gains that have been made in terms of the new curriculum, your work on the culture, the D E I work, which is outstanding, and the sixth grade transition, all in the right direction. I just have a few questions since I'm no longer in the site council. This is my only opportunity to ask. Specifically, in terms of the Mosaic club, and how is that going in terms of being a component of your your work around D E I? And how are kids progressing? And I just have a couple of other questions. So if all of my school community members would be patient with me, I would appreciate it.
Thank you, Beverly. So the the Mosaic club continues to function under the leadership of whatever our adjustment houses, Miriam, Francore. We have in in our school improvement plan goal that talks about developing more opportunities for student leadership development. That is one of our student groups that we really have in mind for for with that that focus area. We have seen for for whatever reason, a small decline in the number of students who are participating in Mosaic club regularly. But one of the things that I can tell you is that the work that the Mosaic club did last year around the the mentoring project with the fifth graders to support their transition to Pierce is being it will be, will be offered again this year. I know that Miriam has been working closely with Francie and with the people to develop the the training for our students in Mosaic club to, so that we can eventually pair them, partner them with our rising sixth graders later this spring into the summer.
That's great to hear. Then my second question has to do with the new reporting system. It based on the description, it sounds like at the school level, you're analyzing the data and looking for trends. Does that data roll up centrally? Does anybody know if there's a holistic view on what's being reported across campuses? That may not be just you, Bill. It could be James or Janet.
I think when I spoke, it's sort of, that's kind of one of the subcommittee's goals of things that we're going to, we want to start to do. I don't, I don't believe it's been done in full capacity yet. I think it's not in its most structured form. It's something that the subcommittees have talked about and want to do. I don't know if Bill wants to elaborate on.
No, yeah, no, Seth, you're right. And currently Beverly and everyone, though, the incident reporting, when an incident is reported, it goes directly to the school. So this, the school leaders get that report. You know, I imagine that there could be a way to to think about how we accumulate those data across the district, but you know, I don't think we, I don't want to speak for anybody else. We've had that. At least I haven't been involved in that conversation, but I think it's it's a new point to take.
If I, if I could just add on that Brad Spindel met with the elementary principals who where this forum is being reported in some of the, to streamline some of the incidents. So it's common language between all six of the Milton public schools. So just so you know, our district wide, Brad Spindel is the person who pulls the data, discipline data and reports it to Desi. And so I know he met with the principals. He did a training with some of our administrative assistants as well to try to make sure that we have the key features, the key language, consistent language, not only with the reporting system, but how it's also calculated in what we call administrators plus as well. So the, it is conversation on how to align it. We just had a leadership meeting probably about a month ago, talking about where we are in terms of our discipline in some of those categories and given an update there, but that is still ongoing, but the reporting system from outside makes it very easy for principals to be able to stream like that. And one of the things that I asked all principals to do, including Dr. Fidge, was if a report comes to you verbally or via email, that too gets recorded in the system. So it's done in a consistent way. So when it goes, when it's time to pull the data, we're having the consistent way of pulling it. So that is still in progress because the elementary folks, one, they don't have some of the issues or challenges or behavioral challenges that we have particularly at the middle and high school. And two, trying to make it a way in which it's consistent. So that is still.
So who is, who's Brad Spindel? And is there, is he the person who's looking at the data across campuses?
They, myself and administrators, we look at it across districts. That would be a central office. But Brad Spindel is our person that works in our, he does the data reporting to the state. He does the data reporting to the state of Massachusetts. He does our civil rights report. He's, he's down in the office with our register, registrar. He helps with that process as well.
Okay. And I promise this is my last question. It's for Kat and Brian. In both of your reports, you have about seventeen students that are in the underperforming category. For ELA, it's below grade level. And for math, it's two to three grade levels below. Do you have a profile or is there any sort of consistency that you could describe? Who are these students and why? You know, what are your theories around why they're struggling? Like, is it, you know, are they, is it a special population or is it across the board? Like, I would love to hear from both of you about that, the seventeen percent, which is about the same. Interestingly enough, it is about the same percent for both of you.
Yeah, that's a good question. It's something that Brian and I and some other administrators at Pierce have began, began discussing looking towards next year and thinking about how to effectively or more efficiently get tier two or even tier three supports to students that are in that, for lack of a better phrase at the moment, bucket of of achievement and seeing how we can best pair them with what what's going to be necessary to to hopefully move them along. It it varies, but yes, they are members of various subgroups that we acknowledge and and are are always working towards moving out of that below grade level. Some, you know, belong to the special education population. Some are students that, you know, have been on a consistent, consistently requiring tier two. So maybe have always been in that reading support class or in title one or or reading support. So it is, it isn't, I don't know that it would look any different like pre COVID. I think we have always seen, you know, a subgroup of students. But that's certainly where a lot of our conversation is spent in terms of where to allocate resources going forward. Brian, I don't know if you want to say anymore.
Oh, yeah, sure. I'll chime in. Thank you, Beverly, for the question. As Kat said, demographically, we're talking about a disproportionate percentage of students who are on I E Ps and a disproportionate percentage of students of color. And what is the cause or reason behind that? I would echo what Kat said. We spend a great deal of time trying to diagnose and figure out what that is and more importantly, how to address it. I think as far as specific to special education, we're looking closely at our model for instruction to service students on I E Ps. Is there something we could be doing in our delivery of instruction to better service those students? And what can what can we do to make sure that we're making maximum use of the services that their I E Ps call for? So there's not easy answers to these questions. It's not unique to Pierce, but it remains a, it it costs me sleep. And I I'm not alone in that. And 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 Kat would tell you the same thing as what other people and on the administrative team at Pierce and across the district. I don't think it's specific to the pandemic, although we know that some of the students in these subgroups were more adversely affected by the pandemic and to the point you made earlier in the budget presentation. We actually saw more growth in our special education population, at least in terms of MCAS data than in other areas. But there's trends here that are disturbing and not easy to resolve.
Thank you both. Thank you all for answering my questions.
I believe we had, I'm trying to scroll against the top. I believe Dr. Carol didn't go Ada Rose, Member Rosemary. Member Rosemary, thank you for the signal. Sorry. It's hard to see. I could only see a couple of you on my screen at the time.
Thank you. Thank you also for this, this great presentation. It's wonderful to hear about all the good work that's happening at Pierce. And two highlights that that jumped out at me are the efforts of your restorative practices coach and and the work with with our peer students and also the the collaborative efforts between staff and family on the joint D E I and and site council work. I think that's really a wonderful sort of co leadership model that that is is a great, great practice. Two quick questions. One is in regard to the restorative practices coach, Adina Schechter, who we've all heard wonderful things about. I'm trying to remember what the is funding her position? Is that something that we need to keep an eye on?
Go ahead.
Her position is funded through a grant that's guided under Sue Miselli in the Office of People Personnel. It was allocated in our response to our sort of being flagged for disproportionality of discipline when students identified as African American. Sue, sorry, I see that you just popped up. I don't mean to speak for you.
No, I, you were doing fine. Yes, this is our comprehensive coordinated early intervening services money through our I D E A grant. Because of the disproportionalsities, we are required to allocate fifteen percent of that grant to address the disproportionalsities in communication and at risk for discipline. Adina Schechter is the restorative coach who is doing the work under the lens of that grant through the I D E A program.
Okay, wonderful. Well, thank you. And and moving forward, if if we no longer need to set aside the special ed funds for that position, for that particular purpose, I hope that we'll be able to find funding for that position as we move ahead. And my, my second question is in regard to the screeners for both the math and the reading. I'm just wondering if we've used them long enough to have a sense of, is it predictive of our MCAS scores for kids?
So I can speak to Lexia Rapid. You know, V, Vu and I have had this conversation. And I think, you know, my point earlier, and it probably was ill timed in that it wasn't the time to start going on and on about various types of assessments, but I just can't help myself sometimes. But it relates to this in the way that screeners are really not correlated as a structural assessment. So in other words, we're not asking questions in the same way, manner, or even with the intended outcome as say in MCAS. It does, however, claim, and I say claim because I I don't have any experience with this in particular. But there's a rating on there called the R S P, the Reading Success Probability Rate. And they put it right at the top, which I wish that they wouldn't because, because it's a national screener. It's not related to MCAS in any way. They correlate or try to predict the success rate of students in the Stanford ten, which we do not participate in. And though you could argue it is another performance based, standards based assessment, I I still don't, I don't know. It it doesn't relate to students in Milton. I think there are ways we use the screener to triangulate other data to make sure that we are addressing the needs of students in a way that will come out in an MCAS. We have not perfected this clearly. I think somebody would be a billionaire by now if we did, but we do use it in conjunction with other data to make sure that, you know, But we do use it in conjunction with other data to make sure that, you know, from a skills and strategies perspective, which is what the screener does, to a diagnostic assessment, which more looks at standards, grade level standards. So probably a longer answer than you were looking for, but the short answer is no, we don't use it as a predictor. But we can see some correlation in in certain, you know, in certain pockets. Brian, I'll throw it to you.
Yes, to make a long answer longer. So a similar response for iReady, member Rosemary, and there is some correlation. There's efficacy studies that curriculum associates who who the company behind iReady puts forward to show and to incentivize districts like ours in Massachusetts to utilize it as a as a way to predict or anticipate how students will perform on MCAS. As for how relevant those are for us in Milton, in particularly at Pierce, to the first part of your question, it certainly hasn't been long enough to know whether the iReady diagnostic tool can serve that purpose for us at Pierce. This is this in this past winter was just our fourth administration, which is, you know, only one full calendar year. And I think it takes significantly longer than that to establish it as a routine and as a experience for all students to produce valid data across the board. That said, we had, we did see a correlation to last year's MCAS and the iReady data that we collected last June. You know, I think that they're very different assessments, and that's, I think, the the big takeaway that I would want the the committee members to understand. The MCAS is questions that only align to material that's been taught during that grade level year. And the iReady, and it's all the same questions. Every sixth grade student across Massachusetts gets the same MCAS questions for math as they do for ELA. And in the iReady diagnostic experience, students get all different questions and those questions vary in grade level depending on the level of mastery that they're able to show. And so I think one thing that does happen with iReady as students sort of continue to answer items incorrectly, it pushes them down into content where you start to really lose validity in the data that you're collecting in terms of its pinpoint accuracy. And then that has a little bit of a snowball effect on the next time they take it because they're starting with questions. And so one of the concerns that I've raised and expressed about iReady is, you know, does it come from the assumption that a student that has one gap in grade three is therefore unable as a seventh grader to access some seventh grade math concept that is completely disconnected from the gap that showed up in their iReady diagnostic experience? And I think we have a lot of reason to believe that it doesn't. So I mentioned earlier, kind of continuing to evaluate and weighing out the pros and cons of how we utilize this tool moving forward at Pierce in particular. So I definitely, I think, went over Kat's response time, even in that question. Forgive me.
Thank you.
So I see one more hand raised up, but out of respect for the time in other people on here, Dr. Carol, I'll take your questions. And if folks have any additional questions for Pierce, please feel free to email me and then maybe we could get you those questions if that is okay. I'm just a little concerned about.
Thanks Superintendent Jet. I was thinking the same thing. I I can share my questions as sort of lingering questions if they would be appropriate to follow up with me and the committee later on. Just things that jumped out. And I do also echo thanks, appreciation for this thorough presentation and all the work you do that that it represents. The first thing which really I think was a lingering question is about what you mentioned, Ada, that the model of co-facilitating between staff and parents and community members. I'm really interested to learn more about that. I'm curious about that as a potential model to sort of build on beyond Pierce and thinking about ways we try to raise awareness in the community at large. You know, about some of these thing, big topics and issues that that we're working with in in the district. And I know we're going to talk later about forums. That's like one method. But I I'm curious to learn more about that. And thank you for sharing and innovating in that way. Sounds really promising. And I'm interested in that. The other two quick things I was going to ask about, and again, don't feel the need to respond now. But one of them is I kept hearing, and this is really, I think, implicit in so much of what you were sharing about the thoughtful way that you're working with your data, especially your formative assessment data and supporting students. I appreciated your question and point, Betty, around how also are the high achieving students being supported to be challenged and to have those enrichment opportunities at the same time as we're obviously paying attention to our students who are below grade level and needing extra support. I'm I'm, I know that we're going to hear with the strategic plan, we already know that personalized learning is one of the core pillars of that. I didn't hear the phrase personalized learning very much through your presentation. So I just feel like I'm interested in ways that the community can understand concretely. Like, what does personalized learning look like in the context of like teachers taking that, you know, iReady or Lexia data and turning that around into like whatever the opportunity is with students? I don't know. I just feel like that's maybe a thing we could work towards. Because I think that that could help parents understand when they hear personalized learning. Well, if you're not an educator, you don't necessarily even know what that is in beyond the abstract concept of it. But I know it's happening. You all are leading in that at Pierce and just interested in sort of some detail around that going forward. And the last thing I was going to ask about, I know that in our school quality review and some of the findings, things, data we've had and anecdotal and otherwise have revealed the need that again, I think was also implicit in some of what you shared, but which pertains to the need for safety and a sense of belonging for LGBTQ plus students, especially at inner secondary grades and including at Pierce. And so I'm interested to learn, I know you're, I appreciate it, Dr. Fish, that you kind of named and and spoke to some of the ways you responded following the December incidents with the racist hate speech at Pierce. In addition to that, you know, I'm interested more in the future to understand, like, what are the interventions in place to support our gender diverse students and different students who identify as LGBTQ plus? So thank you for all the work that you're doing, and I'm interested to stay in conversation and thank you again.
Superintendent Jet, before we sign off with Pierce, I just want to take a moment to just say thank you so much for myself to all of you for the presentation. And I wanted to say one thing about something that Brian said that keeps him up at night about the the stubbornness that we're having about the subgroups and particularly about the students on IEPs and students who identify as Black and Brown. And that keeps me up at night, too. Actually, I think about the six years that I spent on this committee and how we like we're get we we get there and then we we don't, and we get there and we don't. And I just want to thank you all, though, because I do feel like the conversations are moving in different directions. And I do think that with all the training that you're doing, with all the anti bias, with the anti racism, with the restorative justice, with all of that training, that's going to impact learning down the road if you are relentless, and I mean relentless in your attention to that, right? And to thinking about the metrics and how it gets measured and to not lose sight of that piece. And to keep holding ourselves accountable for that. And I I really just can't thank you enough. I think this conversation tonight was was so rich and different than than many that I've been a part of over the years. And and I just, I really appreciate all the effort and to all the educators and the teachers and the parents. Bravo to all of you and be relentless. That's what Dr. Kalis Warnham taught me. You must be relentless in the pursuit of equity and figuring it out. And I know that we're going to get there, and I'm going to keep watching school community meetings, and I'm going to see the change over time. I absolutely believe that. So thank you all. From the bottom of my heart, I thank you for all your work.
So I too would like to thank the Pierce team and Dr. Carol. Thank you for your questions. And hopefully we can follow up and get you the answers. And I do apologize for my statements beforehand. I just wanted to make sure that we be cognizant of the time. I know we have a full agenda, so I just wanted to make sure we're on that. So thank you, this team. And Dr. Fish, I'm not sure if you want to stay on for a second because up next is the preliminary approval of the Pierce Middle School field trip to Canopy Lake. I know that the school committee members received a copy of the proposal. So I think it's a matter of any questions you may have. If not, could we make a vote? I think it was clearly articulated, this was a trip that the PSPTO has every has all the desires to make sure it's free for every student, leaving nine AM, coming back 6 PM. It will be supervised. I think there was a ratio of twelve to one student, so it's very structured. And hopefully it's a culminating activity to provide some excitement for the students at Pierce. And I will say I I one hundred percent support it. They've been impacted at the Pierce Middle School every single year of the experience at Pierce through this pandemic. And it'd be a nice way to end that. So with that, I leave it up to you guys to make a vote.
You need someone to make a motion? Yeah, so. It's been so long since we, Dr. Craig, it's been so long since we had a field trip to think about.
I know. It's amazing. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the field trip to Canaby, it's called Canaby Lake, Canaby Park, as presented to the school committee.
I second.
We can open it up for any conversations or questions about the field. None? Okay, we can take a roll call vote just because that's what we have to do it in 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 Zoom times. Dr. Craighead? Okay, so this is a motion to, okay, Dr. Craighead.
Approve. And I say yes, if Dr. Fish is going to be one of the chaperones. That was a joke.
Member Rosemary?
Yes, I just have a quick question while voting because in the in the agenda, it says preliminary approval. And is there going to be more coming to us than this? Or is this it?
I believe that's it.
Well, I I vote yes to then.
Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
And member, yes. All right, wonderful. I hope you have the most best time at the sun shines the whole day. It's it's one of the best things to do. So I hope it goes well.
Thank you, Dr. Fish. Next on the agenda is personnel update. And I just wanted to update the school committee on the first position was the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Human Resources. As many people know in the community, a timeline was sent out. We embarked upon this process back on February fifteenth. We had a screening committee that started off with fifteen people. That actually went down to fourteen. We had a member that had a loss in the family and couldn't commit to those two days. And we respectfully accepted that. That person moved on, but we have fourteen people. We did our first meeting on a first, I would say, meeting to do the screening review and the applications on February first and identifying questions or characteristics that we wanted to do. Then we conducted interviews on the seventh and the eighth. I would say out of the thirty plus, thirty five plus applicants, we selected twelve people that we invited in for interviews. Out of the twelve, eleven came in for interviews. We went from approximately five o'clock on Monday and Tuesday until about ten fifteen to ten thirty on, in the evening on both of those nights. And then we reconvene on the ninth after value, after a survey, and we dwindled it down to five semifinalists. Semifinalists would notify on Friday, the eleventh of February. Out of that, out of the five, three people came in and we interviewed. And we pushed forward to two individuals as a semi, as again semifinalists. And that was the public forum that we did. Out of that, I am pleased to say that after discussion with our team in the Milton Public Schools, we're recommending to the school committee Garth McKinney, Dr. Garth McKinney, current interim superintendent, his second year of Nashville Public Schools in New Hampshire. And I put forward that information to you guys as a vote. I could talk a little bit about Mr. McKinney if you feel free, if if you want to have that. But I would like your approval to move forward and discuss with Doc, Dr. Garth McKinney about possibly being the next Assistant Superintendent of the Milton Public Schools for Curriculum and Resources.
Thank you, Superintendent Jet. So the mom, the motion on the floor would be to approve the appointment of Dr. Garth McKinney as the next Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Human Resources. May I have a second?
Second.
A second. Okay, great. I don't know if you wanted to ask Superintendent Jet any questions to further any more information about Dr. McKinney for the McKinney for the community? Or this is really just a formality for us for a vote?
This is a, would you vote, obviously, if it moves forward in all works out, notice will be going home to all Milton Public Schools families with a descriptor and a little bio of Dr. McKinney.
Okay. Oh, yes, member Ross Denny. I see your hand up. Yeah, my question has to do with what the trends, assuming that we vote yes, what the transition experience would be like? Will Assistant Superintendent Sheehan be allowed to overlap with Dr. McKinney to help him adjust to the new role?
With without question, in a spirit of full disclosure, before I come to you guys, as a recommendation, I want to make sure that number one, that that individual is serious about coming to the Milton Public Schools. That individual has already exchanged cell phone numbers with Janet Sheehan, already reached out to her, already stopped by the Milton Public Schools. They have a conversation. Janet and I had this conversation. This person would stop on July first, but there will be days in which that individual would come into the Milton Public Schools, do some transition work. And as people may or may not know, Janet Sheehan is was retired, came out of retirement, but is still a phone call away to be a support for Garth McKinney.
I'll just add, I will do everything I can to ensure a smooth transition. Thank you. Thank you. Anyone else have any questions for Superintendent Jet? No? All right, then this will be a roll call vote. I'm going to start with you, member White.
Yes.
Member Rosemary?
Yes.
Dr. Craighead?
Abstained.
Okay. Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
And member Carol?
Yes.
And member Eberhart, yes. Okay, so help me that five zero one, am I correct? Okay, wonderful. Congratulations to Dr. McKinney, and we look forward to I'm meeting him at a future date and welcoming him to the Milton Public Schools.
So thank you very much. And just a quick update on the DEI, the Director of Diversity Equity Inclusion. Once again, that was a very interesting process, to say the least, with this position. We had twenty five candidates that applied. That pool quickly dwindled down to about five candidates. However, because of the timeframe, we had one candidate that pulled out, and then we had another candidate from the Ukraine. And for obviously, we obvious reasons, we have not been able to get in touch with that individual. But it was three people that we did interview. We had a committee of eight people, three parents, one student, a department head, a principal, and then Assistant Superintendent Sheehan and myself. We interviewed those three candidates on, I believe it was March twenty eighth. We interviewed those three candidates on, I believe it was March 28th. Yes, March 28th. That entire screening committee felt very strongly about a candidate that rose above and beyond the other two candidates because of her experience, so much so that the committee asked if we could move forward with that. I said, no, we have to do a second interview. We did a second interview with a smaller screening committee. It consisted of Janet Sheehan, myself, Amy Dexter, Assistant Superintendent Dexter, Karen Cahill, and Dr. John Redding, Principal of the Cunningham Elementary School. Once again, unanimous on that individual. That individual is Claire Galloway Jones. She was formerly in Bedford Public Schools, and she's currently employed in Sharon Public Schools. Both met co-director in there. Prior to that, she was in Boston Public Schools under many different roles for several years. She comes to us highly recommended by multiple superintendents, along with former administrators that she worked with in her current folks. She is very interested in the job. We are now embarking upon some conversations about potential transition and start date. But obviously, with any of these positions, contracts and negotiations on salary needs to be, needs to happen. So, very excited about coming to the Milton Public Schools, and we hope that that works. I don't think this one is necessarily a vote, it's just primarily me giving you a quick update. I do want to, I do want to address one issue because we did have a concern about the timeline in us not following the timeline when we talked about it. These timelines are set up not knowing how many candidates that we're going to get. Folks, if folks, if I go back to the Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum, because we had a large pool of candidates that the screening committee wanted to see, although we didn't change the timeline and dates, we definitely changed the timelines in time. And we went longer on two nights to do that. We followed that. In this one, where we had a smaller pool of candidates, coupled with someone emerging as top candidate, we, we moved quickly without violating any policies or protocols, but we moved quickly to secure people, especially if they're applying to other places. And so I know that there was a concern about that, but I think if you talk to anyone on the screening committee, out of the parents, out of this faculty and staff, unanimously, those individuals wanted this candidate.
Thank you, Superintendent Jet, for the information about Ms. Galloway Jones. And we, I'm sure the committee looks forward to receiving her information and meeting. If she goes by she, I, I'm assuming, I apologize for doing that. Then I'm sure that Ms. Galloway Jones will come to a school committee meeting in the near future to meet the committee. I don't know if the committee has any questions or comments. I, I mean, I do think that Superintendent Jet, that it would be really important moving forward to really clarify and make those processes around different hirings as clear as we can to the committee, to the community, I mean, because we've been changing some things around different positions, and parents have been more involved in some things, and community members more involved in committees and searching. And I just, so when people raise concerns about it, I think it's just really important for us to move forward, be really clear, so that it's understood what role we all play in the different processes, and that we do follow the policies that we have, so. And any comments, but we, we congratulate and welcome Claire Galloway Jones to the Milton Public Schools if she accepts the position. Anyone know? All right.
Thank you. That concludes my report for this evening.
Great, thank you. All right, next up on our agenda is citizen speak. We have set aside 15 minutes for citizens to address the committee. If you would like to address the committee for citizen speak, you can raise your hands, and you will be promoted. You will be asked to state your name and your address, and you have up to three minutes to address the committee. I ask you to address something on the agenda, or policies, or procedures that the committee is responsible for doing. Thank you so much.
First one that I elevated, I elevated Kristen Bagley Jones.
Hi, everybody. Tonight brought back many memories for me of these long meetings, but it was a wonderful presentation here. I was glad, I'm kidding, but it was a great presentation, and I really, special to my heart was all the SEL and the restorative practices, so I'm really glad to hear that that's all working at Pierce. But the reason I came here, and first I do want to say thank you to Superintendent Jet and Assistant Superintendent Sheehan, who once again came back and helped us out. And Amy, I don't, I never worked with you, but I hear really good things about you, but I want to really say something to the three of you of acknowledging what a tough couple of years that it's been, and I give you a lot of credit. That's not the reason I came on tonight, though, but I did want to say that I cannot imagine being on the school committee these days. The whole world, I mean, the last three years, the racial pandemic, COVID, the wear masks, don't wear masks, return to school, don't return to school. You guys have really, in Milton Public Schools, have borne the brunt of all of that. You know, you've listened to people, you've been there for people, you've responded to emails, you've responded to a lot of anger. And from my perspective, there's been times where I've been very disappointed in some of my fellow Miltonites in terms of how they have treated some of you or all of you. So I just need to say, I've tried to have your back, but it's not always possible in social media and all that. But I really want to acknowledge what you all have been through and what you have continued to do for, like I always like to say, for a volunteer position where you do not get paid for the countless hours you put into this. So from the bottom of my heart, thank you all for that. But the real reason I came here tonight is two of my favorite people are leaving the school committee. My understanding is tonight's the last night, right? How many minutes are left, Elaine and Margaret? Like, I don't know, you counting? So I really just wanted to acknowledge the work that you guys have done. I had, it was, it was joyous to work with both of you. I really appreciated all the work that you've done, Elaine. I don't think I ever saw you flustered. I don't think I ever saw you lose your cool. I often did. I don't think I ever saw you do that, and you loaned your expertise to us. You gave you our, you gave us your expertise, and it was very much appreciated. So I wanted to say that. I also want to say that Margaret, I think I owe you an apology and a thank you. Margaret, I really, I'm not going to use the word bully, but I really pushed her to run for school committee. I was very selfish in that I had worked with Margaret on several volunteer activities in town, and I knew she was a hard worker. I knew her work ethic. I knew her politics. I knew what she knew about education. And by the way, our dogs are best friends because we got them at the same time. So I'm just saying, you know, we get a lot of connections there. But Margaret is someone who I have tremendous respect for, is one of the hardest work, I'm going to cry, is one of the hardest volunteers I have ever worked with. And I just hold her up to a gold standard. I really, and I really do feel badly, there were many times these last couple of years where I was like, oh my God, what did I get Margaret in for? How is she handling all this? How are any of you handling all of this? So, Margaret, I'm not really sorry. I'm really glad that you've been on the school committee. So, all of you keep showing up, you know, and that's really admirable, and I don't think you always hear that, you know, from the community, and I think every single one of you deserves a lot of credit for showing up and continuing to show up. And I just really appreciate it. So I just really want to applaud all of you, and I want to say, Margaret and Elaine, I think we should just meet up sometime now that you're going to have all this free time. You're not going to know what to do with yourselves. That's it. Just a big thank you to all of you, and particularly to Elaine and Margaret. That's it. Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'm going to elevate Dr. Kevin Donahue. It just takes a few seconds, I believe. There you go. I believe I did, oh, there he is.
Hello, yes. Kevin Donahue, 203 School Street. Margaret and Elaine, well, today, well, not quite the exact finale, concludes in many ways, six years of dedicated service to the town of Milton. So I wanted to take a minute, more closer to three, and say thank you. Elaine, for five years, while I served with you in the committee, you were our financial guru and budgetary backbone. You immersed yourself in the minutia of the budget, including poring over the budget warrants, so when hard, pointed questions were asked, we could turn to you and say, Elaine, and while you had the capable assistance of two tremendous assistant superintendents, it was you at the joint finance meetings with the select board, at the capital improvement planning committee, fighting for the funding that we needed to keep our staff and our school buildings top notch. Watching you tackle a problem is is a spectacle to behold. You have this way of succinctly parsing out the extraneous details and honing in on the crux of the matter, so it can be explored and solved. You display this talent in our meetings, our subcommittee meetings, in our negotiation sessions. And often when prepping for a meeting, I would have to plan specifically in anticipation of your pointed questions. I imagine you're a phenomenal professor, and your students are lucky. Your family is also lucky. You're a great person, kind, thoughtful, diligent. And now, your family gets you back full time. Not just your nights and weekends, but also your mental bandwidth, so you can be mentally present more often as well. And perhaps more importantly, with so many fewer meetings, you'll be one less person to compete with for that prime Zoom location in your house. I've missed working with you, and I look forward to seeing you in a social context and in the cheap seats at the back of town meeting. Margaret, I also had the pleasure of serving with you for five years, and in that time, you were the social and emotional heart of our committee. And not just in the sense of the work that we did as a committee, although that is emphatically true, but also in our relationships with one another. When our discussions became intense, or our personalities emerged and threatened to fracture the committee, you were there with thoughtful, caring, insightful comments that moved us back on track, but then also moved us along that track. Thank you. I wonder if we really are all that dissimilar from the preschoolers that you teach on a daily basis. Thank you also for the hard work that you have done this year. Chair in this committee is a great deal of work, some of it logistical, some political, some personal, and all mentally and at times physically exhausting. You have presented the community with a productive, engaged school committee this year while tackling hard issues that for many families in town are important in that intimate and personal way that other municipal functions are not. All the while simultaneously managing the planning of a politically and logistically complex building project. Your time with gavel in hand will be remembered well. Bravo. But it's also in the past six years that I have had the opportunity to learn from you as a parent who successfully raised wonderful, strong individual children. Thank you on a personal level for all of your advice and insight. Margaret and Elaine, welcome almost to emeritus status. I'm sure the past six years have had their ups and downs, and in particular, the crises of the last two years may have caused you to wonder what you're doing this all for. Well, you did it for me and my family. First as a colleague, then as a Milton Public School parent, but more importantly, you did it for our town. We are a better community for your service. Thank you to you and to your families. Thank you from a grateful town and a friend and former colleague. Take care.
At this time, I do not see any hands raised.
Give another minute?
Who hands raised?
All right. Thank you to the citizens who came this evening to speak, and if you have any questions or comments that you'd like to share with us, and you weren't able to speak or attend this evening, please send us an email, and we'll do our best to get back to you. All right. The next item on our agenda is the chair's report. The chair's report has two items under it. It has the mid-cycle review of the superintendent in the district, and then a discussion of school committee forum dates and ideas. So I want to thank everyone for, for helping, and I want to especially thank Superintendent Jet for sending us the, the evidence to, to help us think about the mid-cycle review for the, for the community at large. The, one of the main roles of the school committee, besides policy and finance, is to work with the superintendent to, to support the superintendent in the work of the district as being the educational leader. And some of that responsibility is to evaluate, assess, and supervise superintendent. I will tell you that there are many things about being on the school committee that feels awkward to me as a human being, but this is the most awkward piece of it, so I'm I, as someone who does this for a living, like, you know, you work with teachers and you, it, you know, you just do that in a quiet room, or you go to, you know, go and have a cup of coffee somewhere, but this is in a public forum because that's what required by law. So I want to thank everyone for submitting their comments and their thoughts. We put them together in a document that we shared with Superintendent Jen, and we don't, we don't expect any, you know, feedback or anything, because I only sent it to him today from him at this moment, but it's really just a guiding document for the district to think about our goals and our, our strategic plan as we move forward. And so I'm going to turn the floor over to the school committee if they want to talk at all about the things that we noted in the, in the formative assessment. And an assessment is just that, it's an assessment, it's not an evaluation. But I did want to start out by saying that we started out the mid-cycle assessment by just really commending the district for the work that they've done in the full, to return to school full time in person for everyone. The first half of the year from September to March was marked by a lot of continued COVID-19 challenges. Constant changing with the, the rules and the mandates for DESI, with the test and stay program, with the vaccines, with the masking, and I would just really like to commend Superintendent Jet and all of the administrators for leading the district through that with a lot of grace and kindness, for supporting the school committee and getting a vaccine mandate for the Milton Public School staff, and just really leading us through that with a lot of patience and kindness. It is really much appreciated. I don't really think we can ever truly assess what the pandemic has done to education, but just the calm and steady way that you manage that as we move through the first half of the year is much appreciated by, by all of us, and really much so. So I don't know, would anyone like to just some, jump in, share some thoughts about the assessment and, and some of the things? I think actually the presentation from Pierce tonight sort of was a nice sort of bounce off of the, of the assessment, because one of the themes that I tried to sort of put throughout the assessment is the idea that the district is moving forward with a lot of initiatives, with trainings and with curriculum and with different tools to measure learning, and how all of that translates into practice and outcomes from students is, I think, the long-term work of the district, right? So like, how does restorative justice and how do those practices result in less disciplinary action? And just then getting rid of the disproportionality that we see for different subjects. So I think that the conversations we have with the peers sort of, sort of dovetail nicely with some of the themes in the mid-cycle review, but I opened the floor to all of you. Raise your hand. Yes, Member Rose Maren, and then?
Yes, thank you. Yeah, I want to echo Chair Eberhart's comments about, about Superintendent Jets guiding us through this pandemic. You were, this was a trial by fire, you know, coming in as a brand new superintendent in the midst of, of this you know, most difficult time in educational history as far as, as any of us have certainly experienced. And I, I think you, you led us with grace and with strength and a positive attitude, and, and you, you brought your staff along with you, and you know, I'm proud that our, our teaching staff were so willing to come along with every phase of, of the work that we had to do, that we asked of them in terms of remote, hybrid vaccinations, all of the, all of those various things, that, that was truly important and, and to the success that we had during that really challenging time. But I also want to thank you and, and comment on your communication thank you and and comment on your communication around the the developing strategic plan. And I think that your involvement and work with the leadership team and developing this new plan that will be coming forward tonight has been excellent. And I'm very excited about seeing that plan really implemented. And I want to thank you for that. That's it for me.
Thank you, Member Rosemary. Sorry about that. I was mute. Member Ross Denny.
I do want to start by first echoing some of the sentiments that have already been shared. I think many people in the public don't realize how difficult it is to be a central office administrator, especially a superintendent. There are 12 hour days, there are weekends, and just in a regular school year without a pandemic, it's a difficult job. So I really appreciate the fact that you stood up in year one to become our superintendent on short notice with no training or practice beyond what you initiated on your own through superintendent prep programs and just your leadership as an administrator. And I think the second year was a little better than your first, but equally challenging. And I do expect that in the out years, you will be at a study state and but it will still be 12 hours and it will still be hard. I will say that I am very pleased to see a transition in the way that administrators in central office and at the schools have been given the autonomy to solve or address even to think about some of the greatest challenges we faced. You know, in the last two years, we now have district-wide formative assessments. We have common planning time district-wide. We now have a reporting system. But I think one of the key elements to that, and I want the public to hear this too, is the superintendent cannot do everything. It cannot be everywhere. But if you leverage what your team brings, and I can say, having worked with administrators all over the country, for the size of your team, you're very fortunate to have very strong leaders. And providing a space for them to look at research-based practices to solve some of those things that keep them up at night. And taking that reporting data that you have and having those discussions in central office, I think will ultimately be the key to your long-term success. You cannot do this work alone. The job is too big. And when I think about the goals that you set for yourself and, you know, some of the things on here reflect what was anticipated at the end of year one. But there's still work to do, especially around subgroups, especially around the hairiest challenges that we face, that if we bring the right people together with realistic timelines, because they mostly these people have a day job. So any projects that whether it's around closing the achievement gap, addressing the issues of or the needs of LBGQT plus students or the students with special needs and the turnover in that faculty. This is all work that I really believe you have one of the best teams I've ever seen to address these. And as I said, if they're staggered appropriately and you bring the right people to the table, there's no question in my mind that your staff is capable of doing the work. If anything, the question is, we need to make sure that that's initiated and expected from you. And I know you are capable of doing it because I've seen when you've asked for things of your staff in the last two years, they have respect and admiration for you and they stand up and they get the job done and they make you look good. Now give them the chance to continue in whether it's implementing the strategic plan or continuing work they've already started. Give them the autonomy to get this worked on because I definitely believe Milton is a, it's not a story of a broken district. It's a very much a good to great story. And I'm very confident under your leadership that we will see all of the wonderful work that these people have started, whether at the school off, school level or at central office, we're going to see great gains for our students. Thank you.
Thank you, Member Ross Denny. Member White and then Dr. Carol.
Okay. Well, James, I go back to what I call opening day, if you will, when you stepped in to a very difficult, challenging time in our history with no hesitation that I could see and with great enthusiasm to take this position on. And you have worked tirelessly to work with your staff, to reach out to parents, to work with town officials. And I think that we've had such a successful budget season this year with the additional funding for the positions that we need because people have appreciated your hard work and the way that you reach out to to people or work cooperatively. And I think that one of the reasons I'm so relieved about this year's budget situation is because I think of a lot of your hard work. And despite what, you know, coming into this pandemic and with all the challenges, I've seen your staff just step up to support you and help you and work so hard. I mean, Janet, I think one of the reasons you were willing to come back into an interim position is because of your respect for James and Amy coming into this position was because of, you know, coming up to the schools to work with James. It was a probably a major factor in your thinking. And on top of everything else, I think you took on some of the loftiest goals I have ever seen any superintendent take on. And, you know, I just want to say that the work is very much appreciated and you've made some terrific progress on some of the initiatives and the goals. And, you know, I'm sure you've had to have some very tough conversations with your staff, but I think people really admire you and feel you're very approachable. And so I've been very happy to see the progress that our our district has made under your leadership and I thank you.
I'll be brief. I I do feel it can't be overstated. The magnitude of challenge that you faced the past two years, and I want to just underscore what you were saying, Bev, you know. As someone who was trained to be a superintendent of schools and who's spent time watching and learning from superintendents, I I do know that being a superintendent, the best of years, the best of circumstances is a tremendously hard job. To be a new superintendent is even harder and to do that over these past two unprecedented challenging years, I feel is just a huge accomplishment. I I don't want to be redundant because I know we do have so much to get through, but I did just want to offer, you know, I know that the the feedback and comments that were shared with you is intended to just be kind of touch points on the way to the official evaluation, which is customary for for superintendents in Massachusetts. I just wanted to say that, you know, I hope we as a school committee can support you as you look through the comments, questions, and whatever is there. Because I think, speaking for myself, but I feel probably, I think for the whole school committee, like we want to, we celebrate the success that you already have. Clearly, there's a lot of it. And we are invested in helping you be successful on also these other pieces that are still developing. And so just for myself, like if you are looking for any clarification, support, or anything else around the feedback that you received, please don't hesitate to follow up so that, you know, when we go through the formal process in June, you know, we're going to be able to have a great conversation with that. And just thank you for all of your work.
Thank you, Dr. Carol, and thank you. Dr. Krinkins.
James, I just want to sort of add my voice to the chorus here, but sort of, sort of take it slightly different tack. When we selected you for the position in the midst of a lot of things going on, it was sort of the perfect storm. There was unanimous relief and gratitude that you stepped up and wanted to take the job under such difficult circumstances. So first of all, I thank you for that. Secondly, I've talked to a lot of other school committee members in other districts and about about their superintendents and the relationship that they have with their superintendents and and so forth. And I have to say that that I I think you are relatively unique in the fact that you have the the support and the trust of so many different stakeholders in the Milton community and in Milton public schools. I mean, the teachers know that you have their back, that you believe in them, that you trust them to do their jobs, the and that you respect them and and what they do. And that goes a long way toward being able to, you know, maintain such a high level of 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 quality in Milton public school education. The staff, you know, support you, love you. The the parents were really happy that you took over and certainly you have the support of this school committee that has just voiced that support as well. So you know, given that this is my last official regular school committee meeting, although I have other smaller meetings between now and my sell-by date. I I just want to say publicly that I wish you all the best and that I know you're going to do even more great things for Milton Public Schools. So thank you very much.
Yeah. Superintendent, that would you like to say something? Or I know it's such a strange and awkward thing and you know, I want the community to know that obviously the document is public and will be available on the website. And as as Dr. Carol said, there's a lot of really good questions and comments and and things about your evidence and how to move, how to keep moving along. So please share your thoughts or ideas or anything that you'd like to share with us, please.
I would agree. First and foremost, I thank all of you for your positive feedback and your comments. I will echo the sentiment of Member Ross Denny and Dr. Carol and all of you. I would be remiss if I didn't give credit to Jared, Amy, Shalene Roach, Laurie Dunn in the office. They too were right there in that office, right now, percent of everything. But you guys hit the nail on the head. I think we have a tremendous faculty and staff that goes from the custodial staff, food service, all the, all the way across to the teachers and administrators. And we have a very talented administrative team and in everyone has talked about whether it's in interviews on these meetings, and you guys saw it showcased a little bit this evening in park with some of our department heads and curriculum coordinators. So I thank you all for your comments. I look forward to addressing some of the feedback. It is very, I already took a glance at it. So it is very good feedback we take and hopefully continue to build off of it. But I just want to thank you guys. And then finally, I want to thank the families. And I know we talk about the voices that we hear when there's a concern, a problem, or 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 frustration about a situation. But there's a silent majority out there that believes in the Milton Public Schools. I want to thank them. And for those who have questions, who have been in opposition on anything that we've done, I welcome the opportunity to have a conversation because when everything is said and done, I know we're talking about me this evening and evaluation. It's really not about me. It's about the students. So when we're talking about the budget, we're talking about initiatives. Our primary goal is elevating student success outcomes and making sure everybody that walks through the threshold of any of the schools in Milton feels value seen and heard. So again, thank you guys for your comments. And I guess I will turn it back over to you and I look forward to the work ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Superintendent Jet. So that, oh, so the last thing on my chair's report is a discussion of school committee forum dates. We've received some emails and as we reviewed our own goals and we thought about the fact that we really wanted to have more forums for topics and and dates for those. So I think that we should think a little bit about maybe choosing a few more dates, one or two more dates this coming spring into June to have some forums so that we can have back and forth with the community and they don't feel and they feel more heard and more and more part of the dialogue. So I don't know if you want to have a real quick conversation right now about any of the the topics. I know Dr. Carol mentioned one earlier that might be good to target. I see Member Ross Denny's hand is up. And then if there's some ideas or dates that we might think about. So I just open it up and you guys can go back and forth with what you're thinking, Member Ross Denny. I know Dr. Carol might tell me I have ideas. I don't know. I know I know that Ada Rosemary has been on 752 forums since the beginning of the year, but on the last month. So Member Ross Denny and Dr. Carol, please go ahead.
So I think that there's a, there's three topics that I think the public would find interesting, and it's based on some feedback we've received in email. One, I know that our curriculum coordinators have done a lot of work around unfinished learning. And I think the public doesn't, not everyone attends our school committee meetings, but the public doesn't understand how much effort has been put in place and how the work of personalized learning has also played a role. So if there's the opportunity to talk about unfinished learning and personalized learning, whether separate or together, I think it will alleviate a lot of concern the public has around academic excellence. There's a perception that our teachers and our curriculum coordinators are not looking at our data and making and making decisions based on our data. And I can told people personally, three years ago, four years ago, we could not have the conversations about data and and teaching and learning that we can now. And I think it'd be very helpful for the public. I also think for the the families that organized in the summer of 2020 around the issues of race and equity, the district has made significant strides, whether it's in Susan Micalle's office or the work we've just learned about. It's happening at the peers. It can be worthwhile to actually give people a big picture of what's been done and any data that supports it so that they can see that progress has been made. Are we perfect? Not by any, any means, but we have gotten better. And I think the public deserves to have the opportunity to hear from the people who are actually working on it about what they're doing and the progress that's been made.
Thank you, Member Ross Denny. And then Dr. Carol.
Thanks, Chair Everhart. Thank you for bringing this back up. And, you know, I know that it's, we were just talking about the superintendent's evaluation, and it was one of his goals to have community forums. It was also one of our school committee goals to work on this in the space of community engagement. And I feel like we've made some progress, but I acknowledge that, you know, we've definitely not done as much as I wish we would have done. But that's not a reason to like just sit back and feel bad. I think we can make plans to to do more. I think in the short term, the if, you know, if we were planning one forum for May, I think the the first one that you mentioned, Bev, around helping sort of share with the community all the work that has happened around responding to intervening and unfinished learning, including the, I agree, like helping connect those dots of personalized learning and interventions to unfinished finished learning. I think that's really important. And then to hear what questions parents and community members have in response to the information, not the lack of information or the misinformation, but what is actually shared about what has been going on. I think that would be really, really important, and I'd love to prioritize making that happen in May. I think it's important to do like we did in the like we did in the fall, you know, couple of options of times. I think it's also probably important to offer both a virtual and an in-person community forum on the same topic if if we feel that it's so important to make that inclusive and accessible to people who are coming from different schedules, family setups and whatnot. So I'd just like to commit to working on that and making it happen. I'd also like to just acknowledge that there have, you alluded to this, Bev, but the work of the school building committee, there have been a lot of public forums. That is not the school committee. That's a different committee, but it's obviously very closely related to the work that we do. And so I hope that families have felt, I just, I'm inspired by that model that you all, Ada and Elaine have put, have had there. And I just, you know, I hope that families have felt heard and included on that very important topic because you all have had a number of forums and will continue to do that. So so that to me is is a plus that we can't take credit for, but I appreciate it. And then I also just wanted to say on the community engagement piece related to forums. related to forums, and one thing I had committed to doing was, um, sort of researching the role of the ombuds person in districts. Um, that was something on the community engagement goal that we laid out. I've, I have sort of informally done some of that, um, but I've not, I, I'm just not sure what the space would be, uh, to kind of open, bring that, um, and have a conversation about that. I mean, we're not going to have that in our district next year because it's, we're not budgeting for it. Um, but I think that it is connected to this conversation of community forums beyond the technical sort of event of a community forum and just the creation of community forums more broadly, um, where our community members feel heard and responded to. Um, and so I, I, I don't know when or how that makes sense, um, as a potential sort of follow-up eventually around, um, around that. But, um, I think if the rest of the committee agrees, uh, at least the four of us who will still be here in May, um, I, I'd love to kind of look at with your team, Mr. Jet, um, scheduling that unfinished learning forum.
That'd be great.
As a starting place and
I think that's a great place to start.
Encouraging community members to continue being in touch with us about additional topics they would like to see because that one is, has risen to the top for me, as Bev mentioned, uh, because people have been reaching out with questions. And sorry, one last thing I wanted to mention is that, um, people also know that we have public meetings, um, for the different subcommittees and the curriculum and instruction subcommittee, um, has generated a lot of really rich information that's been presented and shared thanks to Assistant Superintendent Sheen, um, and member Ross Denny, who chairs that advisory committee. Um, so I also think there's a lot of fodder there for future forums as well, um, since obviously at those subcommittee meetings, any community members who may attend are, are not able to engage in, in the conversation. Um, but that's another place that I would look to additional, um, topics in addition to the other one you mentioned, um, Bev, to kind of follow up on important conversations about race and equity. So it's getting late and I'm a little all over the place. Thank you.
Remember wait.
Well, I was just going to suggest that we think about doing a survey for the parents to ask for some ideas for what kinds of forums they would like to have on what topics. And, you know, I know it's April, but with all the activities that happened in May and June with our students and families and concerts and award ceremonies and town meeting, I wonder whether we should focus on thinking about doing a survey for this coming year in the fall for some forums that parents might be interested in doing. So I wondered if we could put together a survey and then ask people for their input. So that was just going to be my suggestion.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea. I do think having a forum this spring, even with all the stuff that goes on is important because we're still going to be moving the budget forward. The school building committee is still going to be moving the, the building forward. Um, and I think that informing fam, families about the good work that we've been hearing about at school committee meetings, you know, in a more, in a broader sort of community forum where they could have a back and forth, which is what I think is the thing they're craving the most, um, I think would be really helpful. But I agree with you a hundred percent Betty, that a, a survey would be a great idea. And I know Superintendent Jet was gonna have that as part of his plan as well. Member Rosemary.
Um, yeah, thanks. I, I, just in terms of timing, um, I think, um, I would prefer to see whatever we do, um, come after town meeting, um, because we have a lot riding on, on, um, our school building campaign and our, our article, um, that will hopefully succeed there for our, our land swap. And I really would, would like us all to stay focused on that, um, before we get to town meeting. And then afterwards, um, I agree with my colleagues about, um, the important topics that have been suggested, but I think I also agree that unfinished learning would be the top of my list as well.
Thank you, Members. So we have some tasks to take away from here. So thank you all. Okay. So I know that on the next section was comments from school committee. We're going to skip that to go to strategic planning because it is 9:20 and, um, we have to do this important work. And we can say something nice at the end. And if Dr. Craighead has to go, I, I would, um, I know she has to get up at like four in the morning to go to teach. But if we could do the strategic plan, I think that'd be super helpful to move on to that. And, you know, if that's okay with you, Member Rosemary.
It's fine, especially since I told people we'd probably go on about an hour ago.
I'm really sorry. You know, this will be the last time you have to put up my bad timing.
Oh dear.
And it's very bad timing. It's just my
Yeah. Um, we have some folks who are, who are, um, not as, um, panelists right now. And I don't know, uh,
I'm elevating them. Karen McDabbitt's here. I just elevated, uh, V-Boo and I elevate Steve Paxia.
Excellent.
We're just, I don't know why it takes so long for them to come through, but once you see them, let me know.
Hopefully they're awake when you turn the camera.
You're good, James. You're up.
On here was AJ to be elevated.
AJ, yeah.
Oh, elevate AJ. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you.
And was it, uh, Dr. McNeil-Gamai?
Yep.
On here. Give me a second. And there we go.
Cat Roche is already on.
Okay. Is she on? I don't see her.
Yep, yep.
Oh, there she is. Thank you. All right, no problem. Didn't mean to call you all, Cat, but
Welcome everyone. And, uh, we, our apologies to you all for, for extending this an hour past midnight to, to have this conversation, but I'm really glad you're all here. Um, this is, these are our members of our Strategic Planning Advisory Committee, and I welcome you all, uh, for this important conversation. I just want to provide a little bit of background on our strategic plan for the public who, um, uh, may still be watching. Um, the, our current strategic plan is one that's been in place since June 2018 and expires, uh, in June of this year, 2022. Um, our Strategic Planning Advisory Committee is a mix of school committee, Milton Public Schools' leadership and staff and community members. Uh, many of our strategic planning, uh, committee members have served as liaisons to task forces related to each of the six goals that were in our, uh, former strategic plan. Um, and we have met quarterly since 2018. Um, but as time has gone on, um, it became clear, uh, that feedback was that the, that process of was, became somewhat redundant and that there were people who were sitting on various task forces and there wasn't enough overlap and, uh, um, in the work and people were going to, uh, too many meetings, um, to address similar work. Um, and so it, we, it became clear that it was time to re-refine our plan. And then of course, we have our new superintendent, um, who's, who has joined us, um, recently as we just talked about and the impact of course of the COVID-19 pandemic. So it was time for us to update and focus on a new plan. And, um, I am very proud of what we're bringing forward. I'd like to pass this along to, uh, the co-chair of the Strategic Planning Advisory Committee, Steve Paxia, for just a few words, and then we'll pass it on to the rest of the team. Steve?
Thank you, Ada. Um, you know, this is my 13th year of working with Milton Public Schools as a volunteer in many capacities. And I first want to say just how thankful I've been to be associated with all the smart people who are really working to make our schools a wonderful place for our kids. You know, we chose public schools knowing that there would be imperfections and we haven't been disappointed. Um, there have been imperfections, but there have been imperfections with our son, with us as parents, with our society, and there will be with their careers as they go forward. And a good education, I think prepares students to cope with and overcome the imperfections and take ownership of their destiny in their lives. And I think Milton Public Schools has done just a fabulous job for our son Alex. You know, I still remember the first day that we went into Tucker Elementary School and were greeted with the joy, love and enthusiasm of that community and seeing those little kids flocking around the playground and dropping them off every day. And now I still take Alex to school every day, but at Milton High School, and I see those same kids who are now adults. And, and I can say as a, as a parent of a senior, that I speak for a lot of the senior parents who just say, "Thank you." You know, it's been a really tough couple of years and we could have all just given up. We could have said, "Oh, this is terrible. You know, we're not going to be able to succeed." We could have given up, but we didn't. You know, the first few months were torture, to be honest, but when we came back in September, the change was remarkable. The work that AJ and his team had done in technology, that all the curriculum coordinators, it was outstanding work. And, you know, did, did it create some issues? Did it create some setbacks? Yes, it did. But we didn't give up. We kept pushing. And, you know, I think in doing so, we taught the students something maybe even more important than what they learned in their chemistry class. And that is that sometimes there's going to be something that's just going to disrupt your life like crazy, that you can get through it and you can succeed and you can reach your goals. And I know that the senior parents that I talked to are so excited about the choices that their students have about colleges, about careers. And we thank all of you for your courageous efforts, for your heroic efforts. Uh, I can't, you know, I have to echo what was said about Mr. Jet tonight. And even add one thing, the people, some of the people who like Mr. Jet the most are the students. And in my experience, the students are the hardest people to fool. You know, they know who's real and the students love Mr. Jet. And so, so do the parents. So, um, so anyway, I thank all of the staff, all of you. And, and just want to say, you know, we've done a lot, but you know, we don't expect perfection, but we do want to get better. And I think the strategic plan is a great blueprint for getting better. It's not a bookmark. It's not a doorstop plan. It's not 200 and some pages that some consultant wrote and we look at it and go, "That's great." And we put it and we use it to keep the principals or the superintendent's door open. This is a planning process, a process that's involving parents, students, faculty, leadership team, and it's used throughout the year, throughout the cycle. And the goals that we're striving for, I think are worthy goals and goals that will produce, will help us promote excellence. You know, the, the individual or personalized instructive, instruction thing is so exciting to me. Uh, that's the one I work most closely on with AJ and Cat. And I just want to say a lot of the things that we talked about tonight, that has tremendous potential to help with that. So, you know, what are the next steps? So tonight you're seeing the three strategic objectives which have been developed through numerous conversations, lots of wisdom under the leadership of Susan Maselli and Karen McDabbitt. Terrific work. And from there, we're, they're, they're already in the process of developing their action plans behind that. And that'll be presented to you in a subsequent meeting. And then, you know, over the course of the summer, and I, I want to say that Mr. Jet, when he came in, said a couple of things we want you to do. We want you to simplify the strategic plan. We want you to make it actionable, to be able to set timeframes and achievement goals. And we want it to be measured. And so Mr. Jet has asked that we set up a metrics team to really look at what has happened with V, who is brilliant in, in gathering data, to, to take a look at what's happened with the data through the pandemic and then to build a base from which we can measure our progress going forward through metrics that really mean excellence. So I have been privileged to be on this and I told Ada that if you'll have me, uh, even with Alex graduating, I'd be glad to continue to help out. But, uh, I just want to say that 13 years of volunteer work for the school system has been some of the best days of my life. So thank you all.
So, uh, thank you, uh, Member Rosemary, and thank you, Steve Paxia, for your kind words and your support in your many years of service. As we talked about this new strategic plan and the effort to develop it, uh, updated goals would develop with a, uh, consideration of a number of different factors. Obviously a comprehensive review of the district data and the trends, program reviews and audits and historical considerations. We also looked at the impact of COVID-19 pandemic, not only on unfinished learning, but on equity concerns and SEL as well. Then we have the new leadership and it's not just me in this role. It's a new leadership with, uh, Amy Dexter as Assistant Superintendent. And as we talked about a little bit earlier, we're going to have a new Assistant Superintendent of Curriculum and Human Resources coming in, starting July 1st. Uh, and then also taking in consideration developments in the field of education. This will be a live document, some referred to as Evergreen, that will be reviewed and updated quarterly. My annual goals, along with the goals of the su, school committee, will be part in the line with, uh, this strategic plan in some of our individual schools' school improvement plans. Phase one is what we're talking about a little bit, the goals, strategic initiatives and the benchmarks. Phase two will be the action plan for each of the goals, which will be finalized and completed. Action plans will provide details such as who is responsible for the task, when the task will be completed, and what resources might be needed to accomplish those goals. Phase three will be the target outcomes, the metric, uh, recommended, recommendation from the metrics team that I will assemble and work very closely with our leadership team as well. Um, together, these three phases will become the Evergreen District Strategic Plan, uh, process for the next five years. Will continue to be monitored by the Strategic Planning Committee and the School Committee. Um, many members just mentioned that about, uh, ongoing information and, and through, uh, public forums. Um, and so we will continue to do that. At this point in time, I would like to elevate and thank all of the leadership members who worked in collaboration with the Strategic Planning Committee. Um, and now we're going to, uh, turn it over to Susan Maselli and Karen McDabbitt to walk you through the three different pillars that we talked about as part of our strategic plan. So thank you guys.
Thank you, Superintendent Jet. Um, James, would you like us to review the overview document as well as the plan? I know you spoke too much of that. Are we still on track to do both? I just wanted to double check.
Now just go with the, oh, Athis has given the thumb up. That's perfectly fine.
Yeah, just wanted to know what I was sharing. Okay. Can everybody see that? Are we good? Yes, we're good. So, thank you. So Karen and I have been blessed with the opportunity to try and support this work unfolding in the last few months under the direction of Ada and Steve, and we're really appreciative of everyone's efforts. The amount of people who had their hand in this work is, I could not possibly account for everyone. Many of you are here and I welcome you, Karen, and I welcome you to jump in. Um, we wanted to give school committee two documents to look at tonight. This first one is an overview of how we got to the strategic plan. And the second one is some of the key components from the strategic plan itself. So just for folks that might not be aware, what is a strategic plan? It's a process that allows us to identify common goals and outcomes for students that are valued by the district. And it usually includes a five year trajectory of how we're going to accomplish that goal. Our strategic plan includes, um, looking at our district mission and vision, looking at how we want to impact student outcomes, looking at our strategic initiatives, which we're going to talk about in great detail in a few minutes, looking at our process benchmarks to achieve those goals, and then finally developing a robust action plan that allows us to realize all of those initiatives. and then finally developing a robust action plan that allows us to realize all of those initiatives. Superintendent Jet alluded a moment ago to this four-part process. So what Karen and I were able to do was collect all the historical data from all stakeholders and generate a historical overview of things that have happened in the past, related to program views, related to program audits, related to the previous strategic plan and all the work the Strategic Planning Committee had done to date, and synthesize that information. The next piece, we were able to support district-wide through a variety of forums, um, leadership meetings, curriculum meetings, engaging stakeholders across the district through different departments, and really look at our developing our initiatives and building on the work that had already been started by so many key players in the district. That allowed us to come up with our three initiatives. It is the vision that if we can initiate these three vision, these three initiatives, that we will be able to pursue excellence in education. And we have our three targeted bullet points of what we're trying to achieve, an experience that's robust and academically strong, making sure that we'll have high-quality test, high-stakes testing outcomes that are, that are showing post-secondary achievement and really making sure that we're reducing the opportunity or learning gaps in our subgroups. The final stage, the final two stages of the strategic planning is something that we need your support with, School Committee. We are hoping that you will be able to vote this action plan as, uh, excuse me, vote the strategic plan as in place so that we can finalize the action plans and the matrix goals for measuring our growth. So I spoke a little bit about this, so I'm just going to move past it, but these are those first two pieces. Again, just to give you a sense of how we got to our process benchmarks for each initiative, we identified three. Um, Karen will go over those in detail in a moment. We identified how we were going to do that and then how we're going to monitor those goals. As we finalize our action plans, the work that we want to do with these three pillars is looking at what are the variables that will make the work challenging? What is the timeline? What resources do we need? How will we roll out supports? And then how will we measure? V, would you like to talk a little bit about the outcome metrics?
Sure. Um, good evening, everyone. So I'm just here to give a very quick overview of what we're thinking about in terms of the, the metrics, uh, to measure the outcomes for students, um, and other equity outcomes that the strategic plan is aiming to accomplish in the next five years. So there is going to be a, a link when you get the, the text of the strategic plan that will link you to a document, um, that basically lay out all the potential metrics um, that our team has considered, has come up with. And there are a variety of metrics, but they basically fall into four major, uh, categories. Next slide, please. So we're really thinking, so one of the, the first category is thinking about post-secondary outcomes for students. So what is the culmination of all this education once a student has gone through Milton Public Schools? And we're really trying to look at, um, the rate of college persistence of six-year college graduation. These are new metrics that, uh, we haven't really tracked in the district before, but that is something that we want to start looking at to really gauge, um, the success of our educational experience here in Milton. By the time they leave Milton, are they set up for college success as well as, um, non-college success? So if, if our students go on to, to career or other tracks, then how are we thinking about measuring that kind of, um, success in those other tracks? Um, another bucket that we are, uh, looking at with, uh, metrics is for students to be ready for college and career. And that means, uh, looking at, um, you know, seniors who will have exposure to college-level AP classes or dual program enrollment experience or through, uh, a career experience through a, a senior spring internship. So that is also a new metric that we will be implementing, uh, contingent on the implementation of dual college enrollment program and the senior spring internship program. So those are really exciting menus that, uh, we hope will enrich the experience of, uh, our students in the Milton Public School. We're going to be looking at some of the traditional college readiness measures as well, looking at SATs and APs and, um, aiming to really address some of the participation and achievement gaps for our African-American Black students, um, in these, uh, college readiness measures. Next slide. Um, and then, of course, you know, looking at MCAS as achievement for all of our grade levels across all the different, uh, content area, um, looking to increase, uh, achievements of our subgroup students and looking towards, uh, closing the achievement gaps for particular subgroups. Um, and one thing that I will say about MCAS is, you know, we have had, um, when you look into the document, uh, of the strategic plan itself and the outcomes documents, I've put in there, uh, the historical data for the last three years, 2019, 2020 were applicable for some of these metrics, and 2021. And all these three years, um, the way that we've collected the data, the context for the data has been all different, you know? And I think we've heard a lot through the meetings tonight, um, that the context affects, um, how students are able to learn in, in the school environment. So this really, uh, this year, this current school year is really the first year where all of our students are back in school full-time, uh, five days a week in person. And we are really hoping to see, um, data from this spring, uh, roundup MCAS, uh, assessments, as well as AP and SAT that are more reflective of what students are able to do um, when they are back in the school environment full-time. So we're really looking forward to that data in order to set the baseline for how to, you know, um, determine some of our goals for the next five years. And then lastly, uh, you know, looking at metrics that are promoting safety, belonging, and equity. So some of these metrics here are new. We want to be looking at, uh, school climate survey. Um, and the vocal survey is something that the state has piloted and administered. And, and that means that we can get data not only from district, but, uh, potentially comparative data to other districts in the state. So that is something that we'll be exploring and looking at. Um, we have new S-E-L competency screener in the district that we just started last, uh, spring. And that is ongoing work as well to make sure that we tighten up the measures, especially for the elementary cohort, um, which hasn't had, not had this screener, uh, before. That is something that we're working on. Diversity in high school athletics, teacher diversity. There is also a new commitment from, from, from the state, really, to increase the percentage of teachers of color in the state to twenty-six percent by 2030. So they are pumping resources into this area to help promote, attract licensed new teachers, uh, new teachers of color. Um, and that is something that Milton will mirror and parallel and hope to, uh, do work in that area as well. Um, and then, uh, last but not least, like, looking at the disproportionality in special education. And I know that it's been alluded to several times, uh, during this meeting, but looking at discipline, removals, communication, um, uh, disproportionality. Um, and we'll be tracking all of these metrics, setting the goals, you know, really looking to the spring to collect the data. Um, some of the data won't be coming out until end of summer, really early fall next year. So we won't have, um, the, the final year-end data to, to really work with at this point. But I think that it's really important for us when we're setting goals for the next couple of years to get the data that is most reflective and most accurate of a true baseline going forward. And that is something that, uh, hopefully the metrics team will be able to bring forth to the School Committee next fall to consider.
Thank you, V. So as we, um, move into, hopefully, your approval and support of the plan, we will begin our implementation. So to give you an overview of the steps, we, um, are hoping tonight to seek approval for this plan. Um, preliminarily, Karen McDavid and I were able to provide a very brief overview to all district employees during our professional development day last month. The district mind-mix team is, um, already underway to establish those targets that V spoke about. We are going to be working collaboratively with Superintendent Jet to continue to have community engagement opportunities so that community members understand and can have all their questions answered regarding the strategic initiatives. We will be finalizing the action plans so that we can jump into the work and be ready to go. And over the summer of twenty-two and into the fall, finalizing the professional development plans that will support the work being implemented. By fall, our goal will be to implement, um, to start those year-one benchmarks, which we're going to show you in our actual strategic plan document. So I'm going to switch over really quickly. Just give me one moment, because at this late in the day, I'm a little slower on my computer. And I'm going to show you our new strategic plan. Karen, is it up?
Yes, it is.
Great. All right. So welcome to your new strategic plan, Milton Public Schools. This plan will cover us from twenty-two to twenty-seven. And, um, Karen's going to go through with you the three pillars. I'm just going to orient you to the document. Um, you've had a chance to look at this. This is our mi- this district mission, vision statement. And, um, this is something that the district has had in place. And then we have our strategic goal, which is that all students will have a highly personalized, developmentally appropriate, emotionally safe, and equitably balanced learning experience to make sure that everyone becomes a contributing and productive member of society and can achieve their post-secondary goals. And we will be using the district data cycle that we spoke about to really measure that, making sure we're meeting that strategic goal. If we are able to accomplish this, we believe, as I spoke about earlier, that this will be the way we will assess our achievement in this. If we realize these three initiatives, students will have a robust and academically rich experience. The district will show growth in high takes, high-stake testing, and we will show performance outcomes that are really reducing and eliminating opportunity gaps. So I'm going to just let you know that every one of these blue links is hyperlink to a district document that you can find all of the information, and I'm going to pass it over to Karen.
Thanks, Sue. So, very briefly, um, Steve, Ada, myself, and a lot of the people on this call have been a part of the strategic planning cycle for, for many years. Um, and for many years, um, I believe despite our best efforts, it became a cumbersome document um, that collected dust on bookshelves and probably didn't make its way all the way into the classroom as much as we would have loved for it to have, um, been able to do. And I think that when you think about a strategic plan, the, the keys are accessibility and agency. We need this document to be accessible to all stakeholders, to students, to families, to staff, to community members. Everyone needs to understand what we are talking about, what we are driving towards, and what our ultimate goal is. And agency, everyone needs to feel like they have a part in it, that they have a responsibility to it and that they play a critical role in its success. And so we really started the work by saying, how do we make it accessible? And how do we give everyone agency? Um, we took what was a six or seven, uh, pillar strategic plan, again, lengthy, and we said, how do we make it manageable? And we really were able to boil it down to the three pillars is what we are calling it. Um, and I, I like to think of it sort of as a pyramid, um, in the idea that the safe and supportive schools and the equity in learning are sitting at the bottom. You'll notice our, our branded logo, thank you, A.J. Um, our vision is that that is posted in every classroom, that is in every school, and that every kid, every staff member, and every family member, when they say, what's the Milton Public Schools about? The Milton Public Schools is about creating safe, supportive, and equitable learning environments so that students can achieve the best, to their fullest potential through personalized learning opportunities. So we intentionally put safe and supportive and equity down at the bottom because we really do believe, uh, as a district, that students cannot learn if they do not feel safe, supported, seen, valued, heard, and included. Um, so we, we boiled it down to those three. And the wonderful thing is, we already have amazing teams at work, um, on all three of these pillars. So you can see on the call tonight, A.J. and Kat are here. They lead our work in the personalized learning department, um, and they have an amazing team supporting them. Um, Elaine has led our cultural competency committee for years, and they lead our work in terms of equity alongside the steering committee and alongside our hopefully newly appointed, um, Director of Educational Equity. And we have an S-E-L advisory team. And, um, Jenny Beliveau, uh, High School Adjustment Counselor, and I co-chair that team. And so we have the amazing, uh, personnel in place to, to, to guide this work, to lead this work. And so with that structure in place, we were able to identify, um, the focus areas that we want to make sure are priorities moving forward. Our hope is that all of our PD is structured around one, two, or all three of these pillars. Every time we, every time we bring the staff together, it should be a, a thoughtful, um, rigorous, robust, uh, professional development that targets, um, ideally more than one of these because there's so much intersectionality between all of these. What we're doing to make safe and supportive environments absolutely is grounded in, in, in principles of equity. And if we do that, we are absolutely personalizing the experience for our students. So they really do all talk to each other, um, pretty well. So we've worked to define each of those. Um, our steering committee worked hard to define what equity means, and, and they engaged all stakeholders in that process. Um, safe and supportive schools, that comes directly from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And personalized learning was developed by the personalized learning team. Again, kudos to all of the individuals who have come together, um, to create this, this, this framework. Um, Susan, if you scroll down, just to, just to very briefly further orient, if you keep going down, um, you'll see that there are, there are the three pillars. And, um, underneath, um, you will see our, our priorities for each of those strategic initiatives and what we have developed as, as our five-year plan for how we can achieve, um, the goals that we have outlined. And at the bottom, you'll see professional development. We are getting there with our professional development. Um, we're definitely, um, still developing that part. Um, but really, what we wanted to do tonight was to orient you to those three pillars, to introduce you to what we think collectively, um, is, is, is the best direction to take the district in terms of creating accessible and, um, meaningful, uh, initiatives that all staff, students, families, and community members can embrace. So that's really it for my end.
Wonderful. Thank you so much, um, Susan and Karen and V for, for presenting. Um, can we stop sharing the screen and then can see each other? There we go. Uh, I'd like to, um, open, open this up to see if anyone, any of our school committee colleagues have any questions, comments? Member White?
So I just had a question about the metrics team that you're proposing to start up in the fall. Who makes up the metrics team? Like, what kind of folks will serve on a metrics team?
So it wouldn't start up in the fall. We're trying to get that underway at the end of this year and start having conversations. Obviously, uh, without question, it will be, uh, data specialists a part of that. It could be some of our leadership team, particularly in this tested subject areas. And it would be obviously members, a member of the school committee, possibly, uh, depending on the, the involvement. And also maybe a parent or two volunteer. We had a parent, uh, who was very, uh, involved in doing this work, has a lot of experience in data, has been helping us out. Uh, I believe he worked very closely with me. A lot of cases, giving us a lot of feedback. I would like to have that person on there. I would like to keep it, you know, manageable, reasonable and manageable, so we could get work done and move it forward. But yes, uh, but given the fact that this is a public meeting, I don't want to be presumptuous and put that out there right now. I want to be able to have that conversation with those individuals and, and move forward. But thank you for that question.
Thanks.
Thank you. Dr. Carol?
Thank you all very much for the presentation and just all the work you've done to get to this.
Thank you all very much for the presentation and just all the work you've done to get to this point. I I definitely agree that how you've presented the three pillars, the priorities underneath the you know, the way you streamlined this, integrated the various elements of it. It's detailed yet concise. I mean, I think it's evident that you've just improved this tremendously from the last iteration and I really do appreciate that. I I want to be honest and say that, you know, I was disappointed initially to see that metrics are not included within sort of the strategic plan as presented. And you know, I think for that, so even as I definitely understand the reasons, I think the you were very clear in explaining tonight sort of why it makes sense to build those out over the coming months. And I I really do believe this is a five year plan. You know, we're at sort of important crossroads and on some of these different streams of work. So to get it right is very important. And I do understand that can take more time. So I just, I guess, wanted to say that from my perspective, I support I what you said, Karen, about, you know, this is the best direction to take the district. And I understand that the staff needs to sort of be confident in the direction in order to continue building that out. I think how I think of this as a plan I can support is really as like three phases of one plan. And that, you know, the phase we're here approving tonight is is really about this big picture, the direction and the priorities therein. That I definitely support. I really sort of am excited to anticipate what will come in that second phase of the action plans and that third phase of the data. You know, normally I would feel, I think, hesitant to approve a plan where I didn't see right now, like, how are we measuring what what it is we're laying out for ourselves to do? But I I think I do understand the nuances and the reasons for this approach of the three phases. And, you know, that's really how I'm thinking about this. And, you know, how I feel like I could, I can support a plan that's being presented tonight, even though you know, as a full plan, it's incomplete, which is why we're sort of going to be able to continue these discussions over the the rest of the summer into the fall. So, thank you.
Okay. Member Russ Denny.
I want to echo Dr. Carol's sentiments. This is a significant sign of progress in MPS. James's goals, followed by having the strategic plan in place, gives people a roadmap as to where we're going. And I think it will be very meaningful to the public and it's something that we can take and discuss and share in a way that people can access and they'd be proud to say they live in this district. I do think that in my experience, the strategic plan typically does have the metrics in it, but as this is probably, this is Milton's first iteration of a plan of this magnitude. I do think that it is a phased, it's the first phase, as Dr. Carol mentioned. And I think it's the first step in the right direction and I'm happy to support the phased approach of this work. The good thing is, a lot of this work is already started. The workaround personalized learning, disproportionality, almost SEL, everything on here. The vast majority of things on here are already started. So I don't think that the phased approach will slow down our progress. If anything, I just commend you all for putting it in a format that the public can understand what we're doing. So thank you to all of you.
Thank you, Member Russ Denny. Yeah, I I I've certainly been happy to see some of our site council and school reports that have come to us over the last few months as as this strategic plan has evolved. You know, it sort of shaped around the goals and the strategic plan. It's like, oh, my God, it's working. So I I that that to me is is really what this is all about is if we all become familiar with these goals so that we're all working along the same lines. I think we're much more likely to make the progress that we want to make. And I also think that it's going to make our school committee goals for next year be easier because we'll have a strategic plan to align with as well as superintendent Jets annual goals should be aligned with that. And and finally, I think our school committee agendas should be aligned with the strategic plan as well. And and I'm not exactly sure how we'll do that, but I think we should make an effort to address these, the goals of this plan throughout the year on a regular basis. Chair Everhart.
Yeah, yes, Ada. And I just want to thank you and Steve Paxia and the entire Strategic Planning Committee for the work you've done. You have moved mountains, really. And Steve has been working on this for a really long time. And to see this come together in this way is really heartening. And I do think, Ada, that we as a school committee this year have really managed to make our meetings more about the work of the district and really focus every site council person that came to us, every presentation that came to us. You know, I'm looking at the people on the screen here. They've come multiple times and every single time it's been intentional, informational, targeted material that we can use to inform the work that we do. And I and I think that to your point, now making the strategic plan part of that will be essential for that relentlessness that we need to have. So that's the piece that we just have to keep at the center, that we are going to be relentless in our pursuit of those four pillars. And we're going to just keep going at it and going at it is the only way that we are going to be able to achieve what we wish to achieve, to be a safe, supported, equitable, inclusive district for all students. So I I commend all of you for your work. It's so impressive and I'm very grateful for have had an opportunity to work with all of you. And I'm sure that Dr. Craighead feels the same to see it come to this fruition this evening is a very heartening thing, moving forward for the district.
Yeah, I I quite agree. And I spent a short time on the Strategic Planning Committee. And the document was huge and so detailed that I never quite felt like I had a complete grasp of it. And it was, there were just so many parts to it. This is so accessible. This is so easily transferred to students, to parents, to faculty, to, you know, it's it's, it's really amazing how in a relatively short time you all kind of boiled it down to these three main pillars, as you put it. And and I really, I applaud you. I think it's great. Yeah, I I had the same question, not exactly like Dr. Carol and Member Ross Denny phrased it, but you know, I was looking at things from my perspective like college graduation rates in six years. How are you going to track that? Because I mean, we have the the problem on in higher ed with job placement rates, six months out, you're depending on surveys of students to, you know, to sort of check back in after they've moved on. And it's, it's difficult. That kind of data is difficult to you know, to get a handle on. So, you know, stuff like that, I think, will be challenging moving forward, but but I I certainly appreciate the the effort, the direction. Looks great. I thank you all. I know this is such hard work. It takes a lot of time. It's very labor intensive, so I I appreciate it. And just as a, you know, on a personal note, I'm glad to be able to see so many people that that we've worked with so closely for the last six years on the screen tonight. You know, I I sing the praises of of VIVU all the time and AJ and CAD and and so it's just, it's, it's great to see you all here. So thank you very much for your work and and the great Karen McDavid, too. Thanks.
Member Rose Marin, do you have a motion for the school committee?
I do. It's a motion to approve the twenty twenty two to twenty twenty seven Milton Public Schools strategic plan.
I'll second that.
Is that the motion? I thought it was, it's not the plan, it's phase one, right? It's not. As long as we're clear.
The motion, yeah, the motion was worded as just but right, but for phase one, yeah. That'd be fine. Member.
The motion to approve the phase one. We have a second from Michael. Dr. Carol, I'm I'm interrupting Ada.
No, no, it's fine. Do I have to do a roll call vote?
I don't know if there's any discussion before we move ahead.
Yeah, did I hear another voice? Wasn't sure. Okay, I'll do a roll call vote then. Dr. Carol.
Yes.
Member White.
Yes.
Member Russ Denny.
Yes.
Dr. Craighead.
Yes.
Chair Everhart.
Yes.
Member Rose Marin, yes.
Congratulations.
You all so much for all your work. Bravo.
Thank you, Dr. Everhart and Chair Everhart and Dr. Craighead. We are going to miss you very much. And just know that the entire district is incredibly grateful for all that you have done for us. We know how hard it is. We see it every minute of every day. So I'm speaking for all of us, all the staff, all the administrators, all the families and students. We are so grateful for all that you have given to us. Thank you.
Don't you worry, Dr. Mrs. McDavid and Dr. McHildrum, I'll be over to be volunteering. Don't you worry about it. Now that I have lots of free time.
Thank you all and and you should all go to bed quickly.
Yes.
All right. Hang on so late.
All right, the next policy, we struck policy, so there's finance information to go by, friends.
Well, we we skipped, we skipped our comments.
Yes, I realize that. But if we don't vote, it is ten oh nine. Do you understand that Elaine is going to, like, there'll be you can say, we can, we just vote the, what do we have to do for finance?
Just we have to vote some, we have to vote some warrants and Elaine has to do one of them for me because of a so I'm going to do that first and then just talk about opera for a minute. Go. So Elaine, can you yeah, make the motion for
Yeah, so I'd like to make a motion. This is nice. I get to do this on my last night, so it's good. I'd like to make a motion to approve vendor warrant number thirty thirty nine dated March twenty fourth, twenty twenty two in the amount of two hundred and forty three thousand, three hundred and twenty eight dollars and seventy six cents. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Member Ross Denny.
Yes.
Dr. Carol.
Yes.
Member Rose Marin.
Yes.
Chair Everhart.
Yes.
And Member White.
Of state.
Okay, so, oh, I mean, I mean, yes, so five zero one. Thank you.
All right, and I'm going to make a motion to approve two warrants together, number forty and forty one in the amount of three hundred and forty one thousand, seven hundred and ten dollars and ninety eight cents. And an amount of, that was, the first one was on three thirty one and on four seven, the amount of one hundred and twenty nine thousand, eight hundred and twenty six dollars and ninety nine cents. Can I have a second?
Second.
Okay. And I'll take a roll call vote. Dr. Carol.
Yes.
Member Rose Marin.
Yes.
Chair Everhart.
Yes.
Member Denny, Ross Denny.
Yes.
Okay, Dr. Craighead.
Yes.
Okay, and me? Yes, so that's unanimous. Okay, and then we just, we do not need to vote the budget again, we already did that. And we just have to basically make a motion to send to the select board a request for opera funding for the rollover positions, which are two hundred and seventy eight thousand, five hundred and the needs based budget for seven hundred nineteen thousand. We need to send that so that the selectmen can then send that along to Norfolk County for approval. And if Amy wants to explain anything, if people have any questions, Amy's on deck to explain that.
It's the, it was, it's what's in the budget.
Correct. But it's just, it's specifically, it's specifically the opera money that's going to the select board now. Okay, so let's, so I make that motion. I need a second.
Second.
Okay, all right. So I'll take a roll call vote. Dr. Carol.
Yes.
Can I just make one tiny little correction, which I know is immaterial, but it's seven nineteen, one eighty six, just to make sure the exact number. For a total of Yeah, for a total of nine ninety seven, six eighty six is the total.
Okay.
Okay.
That's important.
Thanks, Amy. Okay, so we'll start that again. Member, Dr. Carol.
So thank you, Amy. Yes. Okay.
Okay, Member Rose Marin.
Yes.
Chair Everhart.
Yes.
Member Ross Denny.
Yes.
Dr. Craighead.
Yes.
And myself, yes, so that's unanimous. And that's it for finance.
Wonderful. All right. All right, so we we do have curriculum instruction on here and we have health and wellness still left on our agenda and comments.
I, it's almost
I promise I'm going to put this so fast. Okay, we basically received formative assessment data for the second administration, the spring administration of the IREDDI and the Lexia Rapid. And essentially, I'm not going to cover the middle school part because that's what Kat and Brian did today, but on the elementary level, the difference between the number of student, or the percent of students that were at grade level or above all have improved across every grade level. It's a shame that the audience actually didn't get to hear that because it's huge. And people have asked for that data and I was very happy to share that good news. And that's all I'm going to say about that. In terms of the Intelspark survey, I am so pleased we had data to share. I have the slides up to just give the there were three categories for which we've seen significant improvement at the middle and the high school level. And since I don't have the document open anymore, I'm going to skip those three, but they're in my notes. But at at the end of the day, we've seen significant improvement in belonging at the middle and high school level. And the work at the elementary school level, because they're in the pilot phase of the new assessment, they're not, they're not relying on it heavily in terms of indicators, but there are three categories for growth areas and they are self-management, self-awareness and connection. The three areas where seventy percent of the students scored hot seventy percent or higher were in social awareness, belonging and engagement. So there are areas to celebrate and there's areas for growth. And the SCL Advisory Committee has raised grant funds, this was last school year, in order to stipend to, I think, at least two members of the MPS faculty to come up with how do we respond to the data that we have? Next, we talked about the French immersion program and whether or not students with special needs could participate. And we have got a really good response, which is students on an IEP or a five oh four plan, of course, can participate in French immersion. And as long as one of those students is in those classrooms, it's considered an inclusion setting. Co-taught classes include regular education students whose families have opted out of French. So to make those classes a French co-taught class would be essentially dismissing the requests of the families who specifically chose the STEM pathway. But one of the key points is that if parents are choosing to place their kids in French immersion, they need to consider the child's learning need. And the example that Janet was so kind to give me was, for example, if a if a child has a severe auditory processing need, it would not be an ideal setting to put that child in French. So those types of decisions should be made with a family member and an educator. So those types of decisions should be made with a family member and an educator, preferably the child's teacher. There are tiered supports in French immersion. There are three reading specialists for a Tier Two supports, and MPS piloted Tier Three supports, starting during the pandemic. It required one-to-ones, but the pilot needs to be resumed. We had a question about the DELF test, which is the diploma in French language. I'm not going to pronounce it in French. The point is Milton used to host the exam on-site. They no longer could do so because the size of the program has grown dramatically. We don't have the capacity in terms of teachers or space to administer that test. The assumption was that students should be able to go to the French Cultural Center in order to take that test. They're under construction right now. So students are, right, so that is where, that's the crux of the challenge right now. But there's not much that MPS can do. You can't add that capacity in such a short term, because the French Cultural Society is shut down for construction. It is what it is. We had a high school social studies curriculum update. They have been in a three-phase curriculum review process. They're in the third year. They surveyed 100 Massachusetts districts to kind of understand what they're doing in terms of curriculum content. They received 40 responses. And based on the feedback, I guess the summation of the head of the high school's social studies department, Barbara Wright, we're right in place in terms of content. We do need to do some work around the new standards related to civics. There's a capstone project that's replaced, that's replaced the Service Learning Project, and MPS is moving in that direction, but we still have some work to do. And that's it. There's more detail in the notes, but in the interest of time, I think we should be done.
That's a lot of good stuff.
Yes.
A sense of belonging is very encouraging, since that is a key indicator for success for students, so that's really great to hear. All right, and you have anything for health and wellness, Miss Member White, or would you just like to?
Just quickly, we are, we've made great progress in rewriting our goals and policies. It's been reviewed by the entire committee and their subcommittees, as well as our coach, and it's going forward now to Policy Subcommittee, and I think it's scheduled for the end of May, and then it will come before the full School Committee in June. And then Jackie shared an article with me that I'm going to forward to all of you that talks about the social, emotional, and well-being and sense of belonging that Beverly just spoke about, for the breakfast in the classroom, breakfast before the bell program, and when we can get that back into, you know, into our, our day as the pandemic winds down, I hope, how important that, that, starting your day in that way is. So I'll, I'll share that article with you all tomorrow. That's it.
Thank you. All right, so Member Ross, Dr. Craighead needs to go. She has to get up and drive to, um, best time.
Well, I, I, I just have one, one brief comment that I need to make, and I, what I recommend is that all of my School Committee colleagues put in writing your comments and appreciation for the contributions of Dr. Craighead and, and Chair Everhart for their years of service. This feels like an odd way to say goodbye at the end of a very long meeting, but I am, and myself enormously grateful for your contributions, and we have joined together to thank you both for all you have done for the Milton Public Schools and the students and families of Milton. And we have, for Dr. Craighead, as a token of our appreciation, your School Committee colleagues have made a donation in your honor to the Welcoming Schools, a bullying prevention program that embraces family diversity. And we hope you find this meaningful and will further that important work here in the Milton Public Schools. And to Member Craighead, we've... Pardon me, to Member Everhart, thank you very much. It's getting late. We thank you also for all you've done for Milton Public Schools and the students and families of Milton. And as a token of our appreciation, your School Committee colleagues will be planting a rose of Sharon Shrub in honor of your devotion to the Glover School outdoor classroom, and we hope you find this meaningful. So thank you both, and we wish you well. We're not letting you go of you completely. Committee meeting, we're going to have a few more subcommittee meetings before we're done with you. But thank you, thank you both so much, and...
Dr. Craighead, would you like to say anything before you sign off here?
I will also send you my comments. I wrote something out, but I, I can't really do justice to it. Basically, all of you bring amazing and different gifts and skill sets to this job. You're a great team to work with. I thank you for the copious amounts of time that you spend doing this, and will continue to do this while I am in a Barco lounger, binge-watching Netflix. And I sincerely also thank you for the graciousness, respectfulness, civility, and professionalism that you display, all of you, every day, in the face of the opposite. So, thank you for that. I'm going to miss all of you, I really am. I'm not going to miss these late meetings where I can barely function. Margaret said she's going to be watching these meetings. I might catch the first half hour. But, but I really will miss working with all of you. It's, it's, it's been a privilege and an honor, and I'd be remiss if I didn't say that I had also mentioned the two people that, in my remarks that I was going to give, the two people that I have spent five years on the School Committee with, Dr. Kevin Dotting U. and Sheila Varela, who also brought wonderful things to the School Committee. I don't know what else to say. Thank you. You couldn't have chosen a better gift for me, by the way. I've worked with Welcoming Schools before, was introduced to them years ago. They are top-notch organization and do great, great things in the Commonwealth, so thank you. It was well-chosen. Thank you.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't really, I don't, I think this is the perfect way to end, right? Because basically...
I say, feel free to hang up while I speak, but I personally want to thank you guys for your, your courage, your time, six years of service, and probably the last two years would probably felt like six years, but you guys stayed in there. I agree with Dr. Craighead, your professionalism in the face of adversity, the negativity in some cases, but you guys stuck in it for the Milton Public Schools. And I, I personally want to thank you guys for the support that you guys have given me, the guidance, the wisdom, and the historical perspective, as many folks talked about. It was very little transition when I stepped in this, and having you guys there, along with Ada, Sheila, and Kevin at the time of my appointment, I couldn't thank you guys enough. You guys are troopers, and you showed that, and you displayed, and I think it's only fitting that things started to get better, open up, and you guys are going off on a positive note. So thank you guys very much for all of your contributions to the Milton Public School and the community, and the community.
Yeah, I, I think that this was the perfect way to end late at night, because that's what I've been doing this whole year, so I'm very sorry. I hope that whoever gets elected chair next, next time does a better job than I've done. I don't know, Dr. Craighead, if you know the poem Reluctance by Robert Frost. It's one of my favorite poems, and my AP English teacher, Mrs. Henderson, gave it to me when I graduated from high school. I encourage you to look it up. It's a beautiful poem about reluctance, about endings and beginnings, and, and having to say goodbye. So I've had the best time, the worst of times sometimes, been an honor and a privilege to serve on the School Committee. And, yeah, I will look for that bush in the garden, and I thank you all for your, for your, for your willingness to do the hard work. There is nothing, and I mean nothing, more important than education, nothing. And I would rather do nothing more than spend all my time talking about education and learning. And I just encourage the community to be kind and keep the students at the center, and remember that the educators are doing the best they can, as are the volunteers working with them. And even if it's not perfect, as Steve Paxia said, nothing is, but we're getting really close to being the district that we aim to be. So I thank you all for that privilege to work with all of you. And it was an honor, Ms. S. Eileen Craighead, to, to work with you as well. Yeah, so I know that the next meeting agenda, I know that we didn't approve the minutes, I will just tell Sharon you can approve them the next time. The next meeting agenda items will be a reorganization meeting on April 27, I believe is the date. It will be the day after the school commi, the election, where you will meet to reorganize an elected chair and a vice chair, and to welcome the new School Committee members. So those will be your next meeting agenda items. We will, so can I have a motion to adjourn the meeting, Ms. Dr. S. Eileen Craighead?
Motion to adjourn.
Yeah, the second?
Second.
All right, this is a roll call vote. Member Ross, Member Rose Maron?
Yes.
Member Ross Denny?
Yes.
Dr. Carol?
Yes.
Member White?
Yes.
Dr. Craighead?
Yes.
Member Everhart, yes. Thank you everyone so much. Have a peaceful day tomorrow. Fight on.
Thank you.
Bye.